All right, we'll go ahead and come to order, everyone. Thank you. This is the September 2023 meeting of the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Greg King. If everyone would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And if you would also please join me in setting your electronics to mute, turning them off, whichever works for the duration of the hearing. First order of business will be approval of minutes. Can we go ahead and get a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any corrections added to the minutes as submitted? Seeing none?
Mr. King.
Ah, thank you.
Uh, page two, Charlie Ward's comments. The fourth bullet point, conventional onsite sewage or septic systems will be optical. Does that, supposed to be optimal, I believe? Or should we review that? I'm not sure what they want there.
Let me, uh, let me see what he, I gotta read the context. Optimum, I think, would be the right word.
Okay. So moved. Thank you.
All right. Anything additional? All right, so we'll get a rogue, or excuse me, a voice vote for approval of the minutes as corrected. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and oppose like aye. Minutes are passed. All right. For our first docket item, Ms. Edgar. Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and get staff sworn.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Would you read the first docket, Ms. Edgar?
Docket PZ 23-019, an application has been filed by Alex Nakad.
Nakad, Nakad?
Nakad. Nakad, for the approval of a development plan and zoning map amendment on approximately 0.515 acres. The property is located at 7600 East Orchard Grass Boulevard Crestwood. The proposed change is from C2 Community Business District to C3 General Business District.
All right.
Mr. Fisher, you'll have staff presentation?
Yes, sir. So Ryan Fisher, senior planner with Oldham County Planning and Development, 100 West Jefferson. So as Ms. Edgar stated, this is for a zoning map amendment and corresponding development plan for the House of Cars at 7600 East Orchard Grass Boulevard. Its existing zoning is in a C2 Community Business District, and they are proposing to go to a C3 General Business District. Sits on .515 acres of property. No previous site history. As far as the case history goes, back in June, we had a pre-application meeting with the applicant, as well as their counsel. Talked to, they had a neighborhood meeting in July. We went to TRC August 16th, and then that brings you here to this month. We did post to the website the agenda. On the 30th of August, we send out adjoining property on our notices on the 6th of September. Public notice appeared in the Old America paper on the 7th, and then we posted a sign on the property on September 12th. Here is the sign posting, just showing that we did do that on the 12th. I did have three witnesses that, I'll just throw that in there. But three witnesses did see me post that sign. So here is the property in question, a question on East Orchard Grass Boulevard, directly behind an existing gas station. There's a church located here. And here is the zoning on that, showing it is currently zoned C2. And our future land use map showing that the future land use of this should be, or commercial. So the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from C2 to C3 on that .515 acre lot. The purpose of the C3 General Business District is to provide for appropriate locations for a wide variety of businesses, commercial, mass merchant, and miscellaneous service activities, but does not include land use characterized by extensive warehousing, warehousing, or frequent heavy trucking activity. I did include in your staff packets out of our zoning regulations, the C3 Business District. So you do have both of those pages in your staff packet. The applicant is currently operating an online pre-owned car dealership in Crestwood, and is proposing to use this currently vacant commercial location to relocate his car dealership. C3 zoning does allow for vehicle sales and display as a permitted use per Section 170-030. You also have that in your staff packet as well. And I've included it here in the presentation as well, just showing that that would be a permitted use in C3 General Business District. According to the applicant's justification statement, the applicants project five to eight customers on the site per day. The plan currently shows five parking spaces for employees and customers, and the plans also show 15 vehicle display parking spaces. And here are the plans. You've also been provided with a smaller size set and a full-size set of plans. And then just a few pictures of the property. Looking each direction down East Orchard Grass, picture on the right would be looking down towards 22. Looking at the front of the building. From the front of the building out to the roadway, you can see the, see the gas station canopy right here on your, on your right. The rear of the building. And then looking down Applewood Drive to East Orchard Grass. And then the same shot, showing residential homes just directly across the street. So the proposed binding elements for this, I believe we've got six of them. The approval applies only to the plans presented at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There should be no more than 15 vehicles on display and offered for sale on the property at any given time. Landscaping and lighting plan must be submitted for approval. Landscaping shall not be placed in an existing utility easement outside of property lines or in right-of-way. There should be no changes to the plan without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission and Engineer's Office, except for those landscaping and lighting plans, which shall be reviewed and approved by staff. And the plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements, comply with all necessary easement restrictions. And then, as always, you all on the planning commission can, men, delete, add anything to this proposed list of binding elements that you choose to. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a zoning change from the C2 Community Business District to C3 General Business District on that .515 acres of land at 7600 East Orchard Grass Boulevard. This would be a recommendation on the zoning map amendment to Oldham County Fiscal Court, and the applicant is also requesting approval of the corresponding development plan. With that being said, that concludes my presentation.
Conclusion of staff, Mr. Do you have?
Great. If you saw the TRC meeting, then you'll see that my comments have not changed. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim Solomon, Oldham County Engineer, 100 West Jefferson Street. The plan states there will be no site improvements associated with this project, and the details on the plans indicate that. As such, this would not require a permit for stormwater from my office. It doesn't appear to require a KYR-10 from the Division of Water either. And based on the proposed building use and review of the Institute of Transportation Engineers manual, this site would generate approximately 7.8 peak hour trips. At that level, this does not warrant either a traffic impact study nor a traffic assessment in accordance with our Oldham County subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Jim. So are we concluded with staff's presentation? Okay. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Fauvy?
Ryan. You mentioned in your presentation that future use always contemplated this being commercial use.
Yes.
As in C2? Or does it just say commercial?
Yeah, it just says "commercial."
Okay. What, you showed the, uh, the things that can go into a C3 above a C2. Well, I understand. Okay, never mind. And then, how about signage on this property was, uh, is there a difference in signage under C3 as in C2?
Mr. Fogel's gonna look it up here real quick.
Yeah, Brian deals with all the signs, and he's gonna look it up real quick and answer that. And maybe we can go on to other questions and give Brian a minute.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Fauvy?
Nope.
All right, we'll circle back. Further questions from the commission? Mr. Douglas.
I guess we'll hang on. Go ahead.
Ryan, if you have an answer, let's go ahead and, okay.
I might have lost my train of thought. Ryan, do you know what was there previously?
I believe it was a salon was there previously.
We may get applicant to elaborate on there.
That's the sign on the front of the building when I took the pictures. There's still a salon sign out front, so.
Okay. You mentioned there was no modifications or amendments or additions being added to the building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Marsh?
Question for staff. Being currently zoned C2, is there a option for conditional use permit for, to be able to do this? It has to be changed to C3 to?
No, conditional uses are for other reasons that are specifically stated as conditional uses.
And this is not.
The state of Indiana does have that, where they have a, it's not a zoning map amendment, and they can do that, but the state of Kentucky does not.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fogel.
In regard to Commissioner Fauvy's question about the difference in the sign regulations of C2 versus C3, they're, they're basically the same, but there are some differences. Our sign regulations are specific to each zoning district. So this C3 does have a trigger where it would allow greater signage, but only if there's a, the parcel has a total street frontage exceeding 600 feet, in which case, a second freestanding sign is allowed. So the, the, the basic regulation in our sign ordinance is that you get one sign on your building, which is restricted in size based upon how big your building is, and then you get one monument sign. It can't be a freestanding pole sign. It's gotta be a monument sign with some regulations in terms of setbacks, height and size, and those are basically identical in the C2 and the C3. The, the best real-world example I can think of for the C3, where someone may have more than one freestanding sign, would be a big development like Walmart or a Kroger or something like that, not, not a small parcel like this. Okay. And, and, you know, you asked a question about signs. In both the C2 and the C3, electronic message board signs are allowed. So if that's something that you all want to consider in addressing as a binding element, you certainly have that option.
Thank you, Mr. Fogel.
And you would do that on the development plan? If you were to recommend approval of the zoning map amendment to fiscal court, and then we address the development plan, you can put that as a binding element. And I'll write that down, so we don't get.
So on that monument sign that you're talking about, under C2 or C3, what size is that?
The, the, the size of our monument signs are driven by how far you're setting it back from the front property line. And there are some differences between C2 and C3. In the C2, if you have a setback of five feet to 10 feet, you're allowed a 24-square-foot sign, so basically a 6-by-4 type sign. Now, the difference is, in the C3, with that same setback, you're allowed a 32-square-foot sign. You know, a 4-by-8, or however you want to do the math to get yourself to 32 square feet.
And it can be backlit, and it can be lit?
Yes, it can be lit. Yes. Externally, electronic signs are allowed also, unless you all address that as part of your binding elements.
Okay, thank you.
And you can follow this up with the applicant when they come up. During the neighborhood meeting, there are notes that they said they would comply with the zoning regulations. You can ask them their intent for either a wall sign, a monument sign, or whatever. And then, those would be more specific towards the applicant.
Anything else, Mr. Fauvy? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, do you all have any idea how long this building has been vacant? No?
Yeah, we'll have to take that up with applicant.
That's what I was gonna say.
And then, is this in the city of Orchard Grass?
It is in the city of Orchard Grass Hills.
Anything else, Mr. Winters? Mr. Douglas?
Since Commissioner Winters brought that up, that was one of my questions. Since this is in the city of Orchard Grass, have they delegated to Oldham County Fiscal Court?
Well, they haven't delegated, but they are, they are not part of the Joint Planning Commission. So fiscal court will ultimately have this recommendation from the planning commission. The Joint Planning Commission, again, is made up of Oldham County Fiscal Court, the city of LaGrange, Crestwood, and Peewee Valley. All other territory, even if it is a city, falls under fiscal court.
So it's, all right, that clears up that point.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
No.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
This says that the plan is to have 15 cars. What is to, if we approve it, what is to keep them from packing in 50 cars?
Code enforcement. You know, if, if we either saw there were complaints that there were more cars on the property than the binding element allowed, we would give them either a notice of violation or citation.
Anything else, Ms. Jones? Anyone else? Please.
Orchard Grass has no zoning capability?
Uh, not, no, not, again, it's fiscal court, but they certainly have input into the planning commissions. I'm, there, I know there are representatives from the city of Orchard Grass here, so you can hear from them.
Okay, great.
Anyone else? Mr. Fisher, thank you.
And just to note, there is a letter in your packets from the attorney from Orchard Grass Hills. So just make sure, if you haven't seen that, that is in your packet already.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, we'll close the staff portion of the hearing. We'll move into presentation from applicant. Ms. Bramall, let's go ahead and get everybody who's gonna testify sworn. Thank you, Ryan.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bramall, floor's yours.
Good morning. I'm Chelsea Bramall, 401 West Jefferson Street, LaGrange. I represent the applicant, House of Cards LLC, and Alex Nakad. This is the property that we're, is in question. And another visual of the site plan. As you can see there, and as we discussed, there are no exterior modifications to the building as it stands. We have the.
Get a little closer to that mic. More volume.
We have this zoning map here, which kind of goes out a little bit. 7600 is here on the corner. As you can see, the, it's surrounded to, toward US 22 by commercial properties, and that goes all the way to the corner there. And I'm not coming up with the name of that other road over there. But there is one residential property that it is adjacent to this, the one that sits behind the building and faces the back of the building. This plan, or, this plan roughly addresses some changes in the economic nature of the area. We talk about, this property has been vacant for some time. None of us quite know how long, but at least since the end of last year. I think it was, it was sold at that time, and it was vacant. It had a barber ship, a barber shop and salon in it. It also, at some point, housed an insurance office. Those things, it's hard to fill office space at this time with people working remotely. Small offices aren't in high demand. Also, retail is difficult to come by in filling in spots with online shopping. There just isn't quite the demand that there probably was at one time for small retail outlets and service outlets. The development plan, this is an existing business. It's internet-based auto sales. It's primarily appointment-based. So what will happen is the cars are listed and photographed and placed online. If customers are interested in the car, then they will generally call, make an appointment, say, "This is the one I wanna drive," we'll pull the car out, and it will be made available to them. There is not a whole lot of passing by, but that is a component of customers who will just pass by and see a vehicle that they wanna drive. It's not a high-volume operation, so, and any given day, estimates there will be five or less customers on the premises at any time. We talked about the favorable hours. There's a concern that the daycare there blocks up in the morning and in the afternoon, drop-off and pickup there. We don't expect any contribution to that sort of traffic congestion. It wouldn't open until well after drop-off for that daycare, and it would close at any time. There wouldn't be a rush around closing time. The latest that would be open, they haven't ever done this before, but the latest that would be open, they may extend the hours to 7:00 PM in the summer due to the extended daylight. These are the permissible uses. We did sort of a comparison between C2 and C3, and I've highlighted or underlined the, the changes. They're not drastically different, especially when you consider the situation of this property on a half-acre lot. So it would include building material supplies, printing lithograph, the vehicle sales and display is, is what we're looking to do here, government buildings. And then the industrial and recreational, there's just not the space for that type of thing. We've also had extensive discussion with the community members. In addition to the list, we had a neighborhood meeting. We also attended a city meeting. And, you know, we're here and the feedback here. So we've proposed additional binding elements that we hope that will solve some of these issues. Mainly that the C3 designation would be restricted to the use of auto sales and displays. So you're not opening the can of worms to the boat sales and the mini golf and all of that. So any other C3 use would require further approval. We're agreeable to that. This is the only C3 use the applicant is looking for, or that frankly makes sense, pretty much, from that list. much, from that list. The landscape buffering, I don't think under...going from a commercial use to a commercial use would necessarily trigger that under the ordinance, but we're amenable to installing the landscape buffering between that residential property. There is none at this time. I don't think we have a good photo of it. There is no landscape buffering there, so in compliance with the landscape guidelines, you know, six-foot plants between the Applewood residence. Another concern was that test drivers will be driving through the neighborhood, missing stop signs. That's...the applicant can testify later, that's not usually what people want to do when they're test-driving cars, stop-and-go traffic going 25 miles an hour is not what you want to do with a car you're testing out. They'll want to go on US Highway 22, but he agrees to direct them, "Don't go through the neighborhood. You know, here's a loop we've designed, go out to 22 and around, and you can come back." The applicant additionally agrees to rope off, it's a temporary barrier, the rear entrance on Applewood. There was some concern about the residents there, that there would be traffic going, filtering through there, so he's agreed to during the day, during operating hours, to rope off that with a temporary...a posting cable. I don't think it makes sense to permanently close that, installing curbs and closing a driveway. It doesn't make sense if this, you know, for the future of the building, the business, if it goes back to some sort of retail, you're going to want that traffic flow if there aren't cars parked there forever and ever. We talk about this being an existing business. It's also in line with a comprehensive plan we talked about. You saw the future land use map, that's also commercial. This isn't a big jump with that proposed binding element, that it be limited to auto sales. You can already do auto work. Vehicle repair service stations are already permitted, so this is just an extension of that. There won't be work done on these vehicles on the premises. Once they're acquired, it's my understanding, they go to Louisville somewhere to get shined up and fixed up, the mechanical work gets done elsewhere. By the time they're brought on the lot, they're already in the condition to be sold. So, no work is going to be done on the vehicles there. No products are going to be stored. Just trying to think of the other sort of feedback we've gotten on those. But I have the applicant here, if you have additional questions, and the engineer.
We'll come to that. Thank you, Ms. Bramall. Anything else the applicant would like to add?
I'm happy to answer any question if you'd like.
Thank you, thank you, and we will get to that. All right. With the applicant's presentation closed, we'll move into testimony and questions by those opposing the applicant or the application. For those of you who would like to provide testimony or ask questions, I'll ask that you all stand, whoever wishes to speak, so we can get you sworn in, and then we'll get your name and address as you approach the podium.
Everybody raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mark Adams, city engineer for the city of Orchard Grass Hills. Been city engineer since 2015. My address is 4314 Hampton Creek, Louisville, Kentucky, 40241.
Thank you.
So, my previous background was county engineer for Louisville Metro, city of Louisville, and as part of my job as county engineer, I sat on the planning and zoning board for 11 years. So, worked at for the city of Orchard Grass Hills since 2015, also serving on the Louisville Metro Planning and Zoning Board for 11 years. I've seen a lot of cases. I've never seen a case quite like this that's come into a neighborhood for a C3 use. I think everybody has the letter from the city attorney, Greg Troutman. The mayor of Orchard Grass Hills also presented a letter. I don't know if you have seen that letter yet.
Jay does that.
He also is adamantly...okay, thank you. Right. So, Mayor Lally unfortunately couldn't be here today, and the city attorney is out of town. He couldn't change his plans either, so...but their positions are clear in both these...this letter from the mayor, being adamantly opposed to this change of zoning, and also from Greg Troutman on his four-page letter that I think is also part of your packet. But this property has been like this for 50 years. It's a...it served as a good transitional use from Kentucky 22 into the neighborhood, the mini mart, the dental office, the daycare, the church, and then what's previously been on this site, as the applicant has stated, is correct. But to have a car lot sitting in the neighborhood with access directly off East Orchard Grass, not off 22, is totally inappropriate. It should not even be proposed, but it is, so, you know, so we're dealing with it as best we can. One of the things that Mr. Troutman pointed out, trying to do some research just in Oldham County, the number of used car lots that you all have in your packet, they all have appropriate use, they have access to a...an arterial or minor arterial or collector, not a subdivision street. So, we haven't been able to find another automobile use that is actually accessing a neighborhood street. So, it's...so, once you get past the mini mart and the existing building, then it's totally residential, and for all the residents of Orchard Grass to be going past a used car lot, you know, every day, in and out, in the neighborhood, is totally out of character. So, we have nothing against the applicant. They came to the neighborhood meeting, they presented their plan, they said they're going to have 30 to 40 cars on the lot. We said, "Well, how can that be? You're only showing 15 spaces available." Well, he said, "That's what they need for the business." Now, that's my understanding of how he presented it, but that's changed now. He says now, he said, "There's only going to be 15..."there's only going to be 15 cars, and that's it. Well, on a half-acre, we just don't think this site is the right size for their business, and we certainly are against the, you know, the infringement into the neighborhood. So, I know the binding elements that the attorney proposed should be...that there are additional restrictions on the applicant. We think these should be included regardless of what happens, because if it is approved, then we feel like the...Mr. Troutman's landscape buffer language is better than the applicant's language. We also feel it should revert back to the C2 use immediately if this ceases. We think the back entrance should definitely be removed. If you're going to have a landscape buffer, and they're proposing a landscape buffer to try to screen, then that back entrance serves no purpose. It doesn't need to be there. The uses that have been there before, low intensity, they don't need a circulation to Applewood, and that's a minor issue to request that the...that entrance be removed, not be just chained off, because that detracts from the buffer that you could put there. I mean, there's a resident directly behind this building, and they're sitting there looking at it, plus other residents in the area. So, we think that definitely should be removed, and, you know, when you...when you just, you know, you hear the applicant that they've already purchased the property, well, that's inconsequential. If they already purchased the property, then they must feel like if this is not zone C3, then they can live with the C2. Otherwise, why would they go ahead and already purchase the property? Well, that's what they...that's what they told us at the neighborhood meeting, and, you know, I may be...may be, you know, wrong about that, but that's the information that we have. So, you know, when you look at access and a used car lot, that should be on...that should be directly on to 22. Then, when you come out of that site, they're going to be looping around. Now, 22, everybody knows, is very busy. Coming in and out, making left-hand turns is dangerous. So, from a, you know, engineering perspective, you want to make a right-hand turn, and you...right-hand turns are the safest turns. Everybody knows that. So, people would come out, they would turn right on to 22, they'd go up to Hound's Turn Right, then they would go down to Papa Hill Turn Right, then they'd go down to Side Oats, and then they would turn back around on to East Orchard Grass. So, there's a...there's another loop, and we don't want them going through the neighborhood, and how's anybody to protect them? If not, people are coming out, and they're going to be making left-hand turns, which could be more dangerous coming in and out. So, that's another reason why we're against it. But the main reason is just the intrusion of used cars sitting in the neighborhood, you know, 24/7. You know, we just...we think it's inappropriate, and all the information that's been presented, we hope you all strongly consider, you know, not approving this case. I know there's some other residents and other council members from Orchard Grass that also would like to speak, so I'm glad to answer any questions if there are any.
We'll get to that, Mr. Adams. Thank you, we appreciate your comments. We'll take who's next. Good morning. Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
Amber Vaughn, 7434 East Orchard Grass Boulevard, the same street that this location is at. So, I'm a resident of the neighborhood, and I'm also on the city council. Mark, I already mentioned several of the points that I was wanting to convey, but it bears repeating. Currently, as you're aware, there are commercial businesses there at the end. So far, all these have fit in well with the daily needs of the families there. They're C2 community businesses. It's part of our community, which is very important to us. You've got dental care, childcare, small store, all conveniences that fit into family lifestyle. An auto, used auto lot, does not fit into that. I think there was a reason it was originally zoned C2, and I realize sometimes things change, demographics change, economics change, and that's why we're allowed to appeal for these changes. You guys do this every day. I've only researched it since this began, so obviously we'll defer to your judgment, but I want to make it clear that the residents of this city do not want a used car lot in our neighborhood. I appreciate the pictures earlier, because they do show pretty well how the neighborhood is right there. But I do have these, if you can see. Am I allowed to?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Just not keeping my own mind.
Thank you.
The bottom one just shows...if you're sitting at this house, and instead of having a neighbor across the street from you, you have this building, it's a little easier to stomach a salon or somewhere like that than it is sitting on your front porch and staring into a used car lot. And that is why I really, above all of our other requests, want to see that rear entrance removed, dug up and removed. As you can see from the other picture, there are two other ingress egress options for this location to use.
I'm sorry, just pause for...we need to really get it out of the overhead, so we know.
Oh.
Thank you, yeah.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, on that top picture, you can see that there's two alternative entrances and exits. That last one is the rear on the bottom, that's directly in front of a residence. I would like to see that removed and instead put in the landscape border. I know Ms. Bramall stated earlier that there was not one there previously, that was for a C2. If we're changing it to a C3, I think that changes things. You can see all the trees around. It's very nice, very community, not very business-y. We need a clear divide. I think that's what zoning was created for, industrial, commercial, residential, to separate these, because they cannot coexist within the same area. So, if they're going to be side by side, then we need to have a clear distinction. Remove that entrance and put a nice little boundary border that says, "This is where the community begins, this is where the business begins." Other than that, I know when they were talking about the test-drive loop, I think it helps to know the concern is, are they going to drive into Louisville to go to 265? Or are they going to go...it loops through our neighborhood to Briar Hill Parkway, and then they hit 22 where they've got that clear shot of speeding on through that circles right back into that lot. So, it's a perfect loop for test-driving. Yes, you hit the stop signs if you stop at them, but then you've got that clear shot that just loops you right back. I used to sell cars when I was 19 in San Antonio, and we did not take them 30 minutes out to drive up to Gene Schneider, make that loop, and come back, because that would take at least 30 minutes to get there, drive on it, hit the next exit, and drive back. So, that's our concern about them driving through the neighborhood. Other than that, again, we don't feel it fits into the community. You guys are the ones that make that decision. If we have to accept that, then I greatly, greatly request that the binding element be added to remove that driveway that's, what, 50 feet in front of a residence? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Good morning. 22 feet...
Let's get your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Carl Windhorst, 9301 Applewood Road, directly behind the car lot. 22 feet from this property line to mine, about 50 or 60 feet from this property line to my front door. We use that front door all the time. We cook out on the front yard, and we're going to look at 30 cars seven days a week. It's unheard of. I don't know anybody in this room who would want a car lot next to their house that they just moved into from an area that had car lots. We moved from Preston Highway out to Crestwood to have a nice, quiet life, to get away from the car lots on Preston, and just my luck, a car lot's going to be put right next to our house. We've lived there for five years now. Not only is it going to be a sight, it's going to depreciate our house. Who's going to buy a house sitting next to a car lot with those flying guys and streamers, signs everywhere? Who's going to buy a house next to that or give a decent price? That's my second concern. My third concern is the children. There's a lot of kids go up and down that street, down to that marathon station, all day long. I see it on my front porch. They go down there on their scooters, on their bicycles and motorbikes, all day long, hundreds, especially in the summertime. He's got two driveways out front that they go...people's going to get in their cars they're not familiar with, clutches or whatever, and they're going to...an accident's going to happen. They're going to go up and down our street, test-driving their cars that they're not familiar with. That's...it's unheard of. This building has been mizoned, in my opinion. You have to go up the hill. You have to pass the marathon station, you have to pass the little school for kids. You can't see the building from 22. You have to go past our welcome sign, go up the hill, then you see the car lot in the neighborhood. So, I really think it's not a problem. We're going to lose money on our house, and like I said, who wants a car lot in a residential neighborhood? And I just want to make my point, that my main concern is the kids in the neighborhood. There's tons of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Windhorst. Who would like to go next?
I'm Patty Windhorst, 9301 Applewood Road, directly behind the car lot. The way our house is...I have two concerns, one on a neighborhood level and one on a personal level. On a personal level, we use our front yard. The way our house is situated, we don't have a backyard, we don't have a side yard. We have the front yard. Now, from here to, like you said, 22 feet, then there's a car lot, strangers all day long, in and out. That, you couldn't really tell in that picture, but their back entrance lines up exactly perfectly to my driveway. They back out a huge truck. He's already sold... He's already sold two big trucks out of there. So, I mean, I've watched him pull in and out. They can back right into my driveway, into my cars. You know, there's going to be people... It's a little, just a dead-end road. People that come to look at cars are going to park back there to walk around and look at cars even when they're not there. You know, and the rash of all the car theft in Oldham County, it's going to add to that. You know, there's, you know, a building full of cars there. Break the door, get the keys. So, it's going to add to that. Now, on the neighborhood level, it is a bad fit. It's a very invasive business. People who test drive cars are very distracted. They're looking to where the keys are, the radio, the lights, all of the buttons, all of the goodies. They're not paying attention to where they're going. And if you have ever driven out from our neighborhood, that's a horrible, horrible intersection there. Two blind hills. There's a daycare here. That traffic is horrible. They go so fast. It's going to add to that. People that don't know our neighborhood are not going to know what to watch for. People who don't know 22, the driver's on 22. It's a recipe for disaster. And it's very invasive. So, on a personal level and a neighborhood level, this is a horrible fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
David Meredith, 7442 East Orchard Grass Boulevard. I would like to speak in opposition to this.
Just be sure you get close to that mic so we can pick up on the record. Okay?
I think, obviously, the traffic would increase. It's one thing to, you know, say we're not going to have much more traffic. It's another thing to sit at 22 or at Orchard Grass and try to get out onto 22, especially when you're turning left. That is a really busy intersection. And any more traffic on there is just going to exacerbate that problem. So, I think that is a really big concern. Another concern of mine is I do live at a stop sign down on East Orchard Grass, about a quarter mile, half a mile down. And it is amazing the number of people that come through that stop sign that do not stop. And to add more people on that that obviously don't know and probably don't care as much as we care, that is an issue. And so, I'm really concerned about that. And the safety issue that was just brought up with the kids, there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood that walk up and down that street. And I think that would be a problem. So, safety is an issue from the traffic standpoint. I think the... I'm not sure exactly what the signage issue is going to be. You know, when you go from a C2 to a C3, you're changing things. And that, the future of what might come in later and change the flavor of that neighborhood, we're just not sure about. So, I'm concerned about that as well. I think the people that live across the street, something horse, have a valid concern there. That's going to change the flavor of that neighborhood. I think as an overall picture, you're changing the flavor of the neighborhood if you think of ice cream and onions. You're changing the flavor. And I'm not against used cars. Most of my cars have been used. But it is going to change the flavor of that neighborhood. And we would really like to not approve this application. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Who would like to go next?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry. My name is Jeremy Edens. I live at 7202 Applewood Road. Applewood Road is also the road that is directly behind this used car lot. So, I do have a vested interest in this as well personally. I'm also a city council member on the city of Orchard Grass. Most of what I was going to say has already been said. But I did at least want to mention that I'm not pleased with putting a used car dealership right next to my house. My kids do use this road to go walk to the gas station as well and go get treats. So, it does personally affect me as well and my children. Currently, we have Hounds Lane that's already been overrun by Ford due to the recent commercial rezoning. Ford is storing between 200 and 300 trucks a day down Hounds Lane, which is now overrun Hounds Lane on our property, which is now sending all the traffic from our neighborhood to East Orchard Grass. So, now we have... We're already in need of a traffic study without this being added as additional commercial property. They talk about the commercial property that surrounds this property, 22.07 acres of it's owned by Jones Development Group. It's undeveloped. It's wooded area. It is zone C2, but it's not in any development plans at any time soon. So, when they try to paint this picture... The other surrounding area is also zone commercial too, is the dentist's office, the gas station and the daycare. They all have direct access to 22. They're not turning into our neighborhood. They're not going around our... And sorry, I'm very nervous. I don't like talking in front of people, so forgive me. I like to do a little construction. That's my thing. So, we... But they have access directly into 22. This car lot doesn't have access to anywhere except for Applewood Road and East Orchard Grass Boulevard or through the gas station, which I don't think the gas station is going to be very happy about them using their access as well. The Applewood Road entrance is very clearly a residential street. It's a very small, two-lane road. There's no major traffic on it. And that's... I'm afraid they're going to be using that rear entrance as the majority of their traffic to load cars in and out. If you look at the actual site map for the property, the west side of the building is already encroaching in their parking lot. What they're trying to draw as a turnaround, it appears to be encroaching into the church's parking lot, the church's property by about six feet, which would leave the west side of their building where you couldn't even drive around it. So, when you start talking about parking 15 cars in a parking lot that you only have very limited access to, it almost becomes impossible without making it look just inappropriate for the area and overloading a small lot. Because that is a very small lot with a building that takes up the majority of it. I just don't think it leaves enough room for buffer zones to prevent them from flowing over into the residential areas. Make sure. I think that's it. Oh, and my other question was is that another resident mentioned they've already sold two trucks off this lot. If we're not zoned for commercial three already, how are we selling trucks off this lot? And if we can't follow the rules now, how are we going to follow them once it's rezoned? Would be my other question. And that would be for you all. But thank you all very much. You'll have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Mr. Edens? Anyone else like to speak? Very well. This will close this part of the hearing. And next section up is questioning from the commission of those who've provided testimony for the applicant or the opposition. Commissioners, you holding up all right? You good? Or do we need to take a break? If we're all right, we'll keep rolling. Who wants to go first? Mr. Marsh?
A question for staff, I believe, possibly Mr. Baxter. Troutman Law Offices suggests some binding elements. Their first binding element suggestion was binding element number one should be amended to recite that any cessation of business by House of Cars, and I added as a business defined as sales of pre-owned vehicles, be subject to reversion back to C2. Would that be something that would be an acceptable binding element?
Not in that format, no. I mean, you can't automatically rezone a piece of property without going through the process. Actually, the administrator suggested that the binding element might be that the applicant would agree that the fiscal court could initiate rezoning and that they would not oppose it back to C2. But again, once the property's changed, unless either the fiscal court or the property owner rezones it to something else, that zoning stays with it until it's changed again properly.
So, if this commission does make that change, it changes to C3 and all of the applicable uses would be going forward until it comes to this board again and it's changed to anything else, correct?
Subject to them coming back in front of this commission. So, I mean, you know, it's plan certain. So, they're going to come back... They'd have to come back with... If they wanted to do one of the other uses, for example, they'd have to come back in front of this commission.
Thank you.
Two things related to that. The first zoning map amendment is done by ordinance. So, you can't just automatically change something without going through a requirement. And that requires public hearing. Fiscal court, according to KRS-100, can initiate a rezoning. And that would be the proper procedure as opposed to it just automatically reverting. The other thing is that if you are inclined to consider this application, that we have in the past, as a recommendation of the zoning map amendment, put a binding element that it'd only be used for a specific use. And that would eliminate all the other potential uses. So, if you were inclined to do this, then you could put a binding element on the zoning map amendment recommendation that it'd only be allowed for vehicle sales and display.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Anything else, Mr. Marsh? Mr. Finney?
We are questioning applicant at this time.
Applicant or those providing opposition testimony?
Okay. I have a question for the applicant then. In the letter here from Troutman Law Office, referencing the different auto sales that are in the county, we have, on the last one, they have House of Cars Louisville at 6330 Highway 329 in Crestwood. Is the applicant in any way associated with this? Because it's also House of Cars Louisville LLC listed as a project name.
Yes, the bill... The business... I think this is what you're asking. The business is already existing in Crestwood at a location. They're renting some property there. It's not ideally situated for several reasons. But the business is already there in Crestwood.
So, there is a pre-existing business
Yes.
by the applicant in Crestwood with the proper location, proper access onto a major highway, et cetera?
Proper... I assume he's not in violation at this time. Yes, he's been in business for five years. And he can maybe add some context. But it's my understanding that the place where he is isn't very visible from 22. And the owners are more interested in converting that to another use. So, they're kind of nudging them out. They want to use it for, I think, storage. And it's not ideally situated for several reasons. But it has been in business for five years.
Okay. So, it is the same... But it is the same ownership?
Yep. He's just relocating.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Finney?
No, that's all. That's all.
Mr. Douglas?
Ms. Bramall, you can stay there. I have several questions. I don't mean to consume the time. But can you elaborate? How long has the applicant owned the business?
From the incorporation records, it looks like it was incorporated in 2018. How long have you owned it? Since January 2020. I'm sorry.
I can't hear him.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I've opened the company in 2019. And we started operation during COVID, like 2020.
So, you purchased this property?
Hang on, hang on. All right. Just protocol. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Alex Nakad. And my address is 13204 Kane Lane, Louisville, Kentucky.
Thank you. You may proceed. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
So, you've owned this particular property in question since 2021?
No, I own the company.
That was my question to Ms. Bramall. Can you tell us when you purchased the property?
Yeah, the property was purchased this year, I believe, in March, March or April of this year.
And what intentions did you have to use that property for at the beginning when you purchased?
Same intentions. I wanted to convert it to a used car lot just for car display.
Okay. Ms. Bramall, I guess this will come to you next.
I will add, we had a conversation beforehand. And, you know, there's a weighing of... He knew the risks and the challenges associated with this property. But, you know, was willing to go through the process.
So, did you talk to your client, your applicant, about C2? What he could put in those locations?
Yes. And that will still be in effect regardless. And I think, you know, he'll have to pivot if this doesn't work out.
Okay. And what has changed since those businesses? You got the... You mentioned the dental. You mentioned the convenience store. They are zones C2. So, hypothetically, can you explain economically what has changed in the last few years that makes that different?
Well, I think the evidence of a change in the nature of this is that it's been vacant forever. There isn't a replacement insurance agent that's going to go and rent space in that location. There isn't a replacement or a retail shop that has been interested or has gone in in the time that it has been vacant. Office space isn't, you know, from experience... I don't have statistics here. But office space isn't as occupied as it used to be.
I'm trying to be cautious here and maybe, Mr. Baxter. Your client purchased the property, understanding he wanted not to go to an office space or utilize it for a C2 criteria, correct?
Yes. First preference is to do the plan, is to execute the plan that we've presented.
Okay.
It is still a building worthwhile.
I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm trying to get you to KRS-100 to get to the two primary factors of the economic changes and the physical impact for us to reach that. Because the comprehensive plan says commercial property has been zoned C2. So, I'm just trying to figure out what is the changes economically in physical or social nature within the area involved, which were not anticipated? Has he listed it for office space?
You're asking her for her justification for changing the zoning map? And I don't know if you're prepared to address that in your final statement.
Ms. Bramall, you had a slide in your presentation that laid out justification statements. Can you flip to that?
Maybe.
I saw her justification for LU1, LU2. But what was... That follows the comprehensive plan. I'm trying to find...
People are...
On the screen.
People... If this was an office space, people are not going into the office anymore. The change is remote work. The change is these spots aren't filling up. Retail locations and office locations are not being used for retail purposes and office purposes. There are other ways to have an office operation that doesn't require physical space. It's gone vacant for at least nine months. We don't... The community members may know, may have a better idea of the timeline. And whatever retail that, you know, we know was sort of on the periphery, the prior owners were trying to engage in, nothing materialized. There are not retail businesses willing to pay brick and mortar locations. And that has been the change. There are other ways to sell your products. There are other ways to have an office. You can open a room in your house and work through the internet. And that is it. That is the change that has necessitated and left this building vacant. And that is why we're looking for other purposes to use this building and this property.
Okay.
I think... Are you trying to narrow us down on the timeframe?
No, I'm trying to give you an opportunity to explain your justification to meeting the criteria for the economic, physical. And you just gave more of that. So, which is great on your part. But, you know, now my next question would be is if it's okay with the commissioners. When it comes to the concerns of the community, it sounds like it has to do with Applewood Drive and the rear entrance. Is the applicant willing to accommodate? If the commission looks into those for binding elements for alternatives, not using that rear entrance? Or are they allowed not to use it?
She can address that now if you want her to. But typically, we would do that if you were to get past the zoning map amendment, go to development plan, we would ask them about if they agree to the binding elements. And one of the binding elements that I've written is that that entrance be permanently closed based on the testimony I heard.
Okay. I'll reserve the rest of my questions until I hear from others.
Nothing else?
Well, again, I write down additional binding elements or potential binding elements when I hear testimony, and one of them is that that rear entrance be permanently closed. That seemed to be desirable both to the city of Orchard Grass and the immediate residents. And again, they would have, they would be asked if they would consider these binding elements. If they agree, then we add them in. If they don't agree, then we look at it a little differently.
Okay, then, just one other question. The, the way the property is, it doesn't look like there's enough space between the church and the building to drive cars around, but is that, is there enough space there between the church and the building?
Not that, I'm going to have the engineer come out because I'm just going to guess. I'm sorry, the survey.
Let's get your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Knizner with Meridian Survey and Design Services, 2249 Commerce Parkway. Yeah, there is an option to get the vehicles around towards, if you're facing it from Orchard Grass, facing the front of the building to the right, you can see a handicap van space. We can move it someplace else along the front of the building for the handicap accessible, and the cars can still pass down the right-hand side of the building for, to get access to the rear. No, no, and it wouldn't be on the church side itself. It would, the church side would be null and void about accessing to the rear of the property.
All right, Mr. Winters? All right, Mr. Faalvi?
I have a question.
Mr. Faalvi's up right now. I'll get you next.
Is there a binding element?
Hang on, I've got John next. Hang on.
My question is, there's been previous testimony that, by the opposition, that a couple of vehicles have been sold from this site. Are you aware of that at all?
They were parked there, they wasn't, they weren't sold from that site, so they were parked there and then they moved. I don't know what evidence there is. No business has transacted on that.
Yeah, let me clarify this matter. Those vehicles, they were parked there after they were sold because of the space issue. And if they have any proof that I sold any car over there, please let them show us the pictures. But it's my property, I can park some cars over there after they're being sold so customers or us went and picked it up. But I didn't see any picture was showing, I don't have a desk, I don't have an office, I'm not using the building, but I can certainly park some cars because I'm suffering from space over there. So once these cars are sold, customers, they need to pick them after a week or two. We used it two times actually, and there were actually big buses we parked over there. And the third car that was parked, it was going for service, but also we parked it until the mechanic had some space and removed it. But I didn't do any sales, obviously not using the building, and I will answer the other concerns when it's done.
Thank you.
John, anything else? Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I have a question. Can we put a binding element on this property that they cannot test drive cars through the Orchard Grass subdivision? That would be a very dangerous situation to have people test driving that are not familiar with the area, and they would be driving around through the subdivision.
Well, there, I believe there's testimony by the applicant that they will not encourage people to go that way, but how do we enforce it? I have no idea.
You should not enforce that.
Because we're not going to stand out there and watch which way they go, but if it becomes an issue, I suppose we could try to do code enforcement. If it's a binding element, I really don't know how to enforce it.
So it would open it up for other things to go in there under the three zoning that could do even more higher business-type things if we change it to three.
I'm not sure how to answer.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Davis? Okay, anyone else? Mr. Marsh?
I see in the application, it looks like the plans show five parking spaces for employees and 15 for vehicles. Mr. Urban, you said that would be controlled by code enforcement?
Yes.
Is that anything we need to put in a binding element to say that there can be no more than 20 or a number?
Well, it is a proposed binding element in your staff report of 15.
It is.
It's already a proposed binding element.
So anything more than that would be code enforcement?
Correct.
Issue. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Finney?
I have a, I have a question for someone, I guess, on the board, Board of Orchard Grass Hills. Do they, as far as, who owned, how long has the building been vacant, not been used at all? Does anybody really know?
If anyone's going to respond, you're going to need to come to the podium.
But that would be the applicant. It's the applicant's business to tell you how long it's been vacant.
They didn't seem to know.
Well.
The people living there have an idea.
So Jeremy Eden's again, 7202.
Microphone.
Jeremy Eden, 7202 Applewood Road. As of last fall, it was still occupied by a barber shop, then went for sale. They bought it March, I believe, is when he bought the building, so it was only vacant for four months. I don't see how that's a major, that seems like a normal real estate transaction in commercial business would be vacant for four months. It was never given an opportunity to be purchased by anybody else to change that. So I don't think four months would be a big deal.
Is it a multi-use, in other words, more than one business in that building? Has it been that way in the past?
As far as I know, it was originally built by a.
Hang on, hang on. Hang on. You really think that's an applicant? You're asking a neighbor to give testimony about the inside of a building?
Okay, okay.
Well, we saw the city council as well.
Thank you. I understand, but it's, it's really the owner's question, in my opinion.
Three parts. My bigger question is if we can't go around the left and we have five parking spots on the right, how are we going to go around the right as well and still have 15 cars? But that would be my current question on that matter.
Mr. Adams?
Mark Adams again. So the, looking at, I've got the, I've got the permanent original subdivision plans. This property goes back 50 years. So there's actually, the Orchard Grass Hills section of the neighborhood goes back to 1974. So this property has been basically in use since around that time. I'm not going to say it's been there 50 years, but it's very close to 50 years because I've got the original plans. Is it appropriate if I could ask Mr. Urban a question about the, he said the permanent closure of the back entrance from a staff standpoint, does that mean removal? When you say, when you say permanent closure?
That's what would be.
Are you recommending removal?
That's what I'm hearing in the testimony from everybody.
I just wanted clarification. I wasn't sure if that was your recommendation was to remove it or just close it permanently? So, so I appreciate that. Just a side note, there are, there are remote offices that people are renting out spaces for offices. If, I'm familiar with the space above the shopping center right off of Brownsboro Road by World of Beer and other, there's, that whole second floor is remote, those are offices. They're not remote, I mean, it's, it's small office space for, I think there are 80, 80 businesses.
Mr. Adams, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Oh, sorry.
The application and testimony section is closed.
I followed that, sorry about that. Thank you.
All right, further questions? Mr. Douglas?
Just for the applicant and either the owner of the property or Ms. Bramall, just one follow-up. I believe you testify or either the owner testified that there would be no maintenance on the vehicles on the property?
Correct.
So that includes no car detailing or that would be done off-site?
Yes, there won't be any work on the cars out there, they are only for display.
Okay.
No work, no cleaning, I mean, some maybe wiping, yeah, but not.
All right, thank you.
Although C2 allows a car wash.
Sure, I understand. You could put anything here.
Yeah, exactly.
And C2. All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Anyone else? All right.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm waiting for everybody else to be done. I've got a question of Mark Adams. Mark, if you don't mind coming up, I'm reading the letter from the Troutman Law Office, and you seem to be kind of representing them and making your comment. I'm unclear why they have an objection to storing electric vehicles on the property or having charging stations. I mean, they're everywhere, they're in people's garages, the charging stations are in front of every retail store, cities are putting them in everywhere, so I don't understand this potential binding element.
I, I concur.
Okay. Enough said.
The, speaking to Mr. Troutman, I wish he was here to answer that because I, I kind of feel the same way. But his first item, we would be fine for fiscal court to initiate that action, that would be fine if the applicant does not disagree. We understand the zoning process, and that would be very appropriate for us if that's the, if that's, if the staff would so consider that, that fiscal court would take action, the applicant would not object. We would be, we'd be in favor of that as well. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
All right, we will now move into rebuttal from the applicant. Ms. Bramall?
I believe you've heard here a lot of the same things over and over again, and we've really tried to address these in our proposed binding element, that this be a C3 designation for auto sales only, that any other use would have to come before the board, they could have their say. We don't want to expand it to the lumberyard or one of the other permissible uses from a C3. We have agreed to do landscaping across adjacent to the residential property, and I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the requested binding elements from the city. They didn't copy me on any of that correspondence, but I have heard some of their feedback. The, I don't know how you enforce it. I agree with Mr. Urban that it's difficult, we can promise not to send people through the neighborhood and to warn them and to say, do not drive through the neighborhood. I don't know what the, the mechanism to enforce that is other than putting a binding element in and if complaints come in, you know, we go through code enforcement. We have agreed not to send customers during business hours through the rear entrance. The fact is, it was, it's a commercial property. It was designed at some point that this building makes sense for two entrances, a rear entrance and a front entrance. The fact that we're going to curb off that, other than it being a big expense, is that at some point this may not be a, an auto sales and display location. It may go back to being a barber shop, in which case it may make, they're going to have more traffic in and out, more than, you know, a maximum of five customers a day. So it may be needed. At some point, this was constructed and it was determined that this building, that this structure needed an egress on that side of the building. The fact is that the neighborhood plan designed this with commercial use adjacent to 22 and then the residents behind it. We can't change, I mean, we can't, we're not changing that, the nature of the, the structure of the neighborhood here. The other thing, you know, we've addressed all of, all of the issues, I think, except for electric cars, which I don't think is, is the jurisdiction of a local zoning board. I think that's probably in those preferred, proposed agreements from the city. And no matter how much we offer here, we're, they're asking for more. There's no provision that a zone change automatically revert back. You know, there are due process property rights that it has to go through hearing and that such. I think we heard testimony also that, in accordance with the transportation standards, that this is an approximation of 7.8 trips in and out per peak hours. I think that's high, we've testified that that is high for this business because it is an existing business and we kind of know what's, what there is, and it is limited by space on how much, how many cars, what kind of volume we're, we're dealing with here. So the notion that there are just going to be people in and out all the time, that may be the case with a retail store. That may be a case with your shopping center that goes in there, all permitted uses under C2. I don't, that is not going to be the case with this proposal, with this plan. I think that is all. I believe we have addressed all of the concerns of the neighborhood, and we ask that you strongly consider those. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bramall. Rebuttal from those opposed. So everyone understands, we are addressing items that are previously spoken and entered into the record. We're not presenting new testimony at this time, okay?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Again, Amber Vaughn, I live on East Orchard Grass Boulevard, the same as this location here. Mr. Nakad purchased property knowing it was C2, expecting you guys to change this for him, but he has not shown any evidence to support justification for this change. Saying it's been vacant for a few months does not justify changing the zoning. This building is in our community, it's in our homes, this is where we live, and this is what we'll have to deal with every day based on the decision all of you make here today. It was zoned C2, which is community business because it is in our community, and it is a community business that it should be in there. The city council, the people of Orchard Grass Hills, beg you to please deny this request and think of our community and what it was originally zoned for and how it should stay because no justification has been given to change that. Thank you.
Going, going back to the back entrance again, so the, the neighborhood, they're not going to be able to control where the cars, you know, exit and drive through the neighborhood, so, so we understand that. So if it is changed, I think that's one of the big issues. When you look at the difference between the C2 and the C3 use, this is one of the most objectionable items in the C3 category where you've got used car lots and all these cars that, maybe 15, but they're, it, they're more than likely they're going to have more than that, and it's going to be hard to control. But that back entrance, that should be totally removed so you can get a landscape buffer that goes all the way, you know, behind the building and down the side. So, so at least the neighbors aren't sitting there looking at all these used cars that are sitting there on display, whatever number it turns out to be. So, so we do think that it ties in with, with what Mr. Troutman recommended as binding element number two, making sure the landscape buffer is at least six feet in height, required under Section 250-140B1 is part of the Oldham County Development Code. And that landscaping be done properly, it's, right now, it's basically paved almost up to the right-of-way line, so we're okay with them encroaching into, into City of Orchard Grass Hills right-of-way to make that landscape a proper buffer. That's, because otherwise they'd have to take out asphalt on their property to be able to make that work. So we don't, we're not objecting to that. We want a proper landscape, but this thing is approved, that entrance should be removed, there should be a really good, nice landscape buffer, six feet high that, that is going to buffer the neighborhood, even though we're, we're still adamantly opposed to that encroachment in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
This gentleman says we have any pictures to bring him up. He either is mistaken or he's lied, but I've got pictures of where he sold the cars. I watched him sell those semi trucks. They parked out there for two or three weeks. I'm only up here now because he said, if anybody has proof, bring it up. I've got four or five pictures of people standing around kicking tires. So he has sold cars a lot. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Ms. Bramall? No, I'm sorry. For any of those who spoke in opposition, does anyone wish to present a final statement? Any final statements to add? Anything to add? Ms. Bramall, you're up. Your final statement.
The location here is already zoned commercial. There are many, many uses for which the property is permitted now. The only one we are asking to change is for auto sales and use. As you can see, as has been presented, there are other auto-related permissible uses existing. We've shown that there are problems keeping tenants here. There are changes in the environment or in the economic environment that warrant the change to vary this use a little bit, and we ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramall. Close this session of the hearing. All right. Mr. Urban, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
As always, you have two decisions to make. The first is on a recommendation to Oldham County Fiscal Court regarding the zoning map amendment from C-2 to C-3. We don't typically add a binding element, but I'm hearing evidence that there might be on the zoning map amendment only, if you're considering a motion to recommend approval, that a binding element be placed on it that only... That the only C-3 use of this property shall be vehicle sales and display. We're going to cover other things in the development plan, but I think if you're going to recommend approval at all for the zoning map amendment, this one is critical at that point.
All right. Mr. Baxter, anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners?
Well, just one thing. Just make sure in your motion that you look at the staff report. It's on page two. Starts with proposed motions for either approval or denial. Please fill in the blanks. Make sure that your motion includes reasoning for your motion. You do have justification statement actually in your packet from the applicant and their application for approval. You've heard evidence from adjoining property owners in the city regarding reasons why you might make a motion to deny. So just make sure that your motion includes reasons. And then, again, this is only on the zoning map amendment and include that one binding element.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right. The floor will be open for a recommendation to Oldham Fiscal Court. Mr. Finney. Is that mic on?
I'll try it again.
There you go.
Okay. I move for docket PZ23019 to deny the zoning map amendment as the existing zoning classification is appropriate, and the proposed zoning is inappropriate because it does not meet the characteristics of the existing subdivision. And there's been testimony this morning given by the property owners that it does not meet that existing...
Yep. I think go back to your staff report and look at the proposed motions to either approve or deny, and just try to fill in the blanks.
The character of the area, it does not have access to a major highway that they've talked about, and I think it have a detrimental impact to the neighborhood.
Mr. Baxter?
Mr. Finney, if you would look at what Mr. Urban directed you to, do you have any opinions about item C of the motion to deny?
It's on page three in your staff report.
Well, there have not been major changes of an economic impact, what physical, social nature in the area that involved or anticipated the comprehensive plan or...
You got to fill in the blank. You have a reason? You're making a recommendation to fiscal court.
I don't... I don't believe that the... I mean, the...
Why don't we do it?
The use is inappropriate for the area that they're trying to put it in.
What I'm going to suggest is if we're going to continue with this motion, that we just take a break. So you really got to give good evidence here on why. And I'm...
There's been testimony by the people of the neighborhood that it is not appropriate for the area, and I agree with that testimony.
And you're specifically referring to the proposed use, Mr. Finney?
Yes.
As a used car lot?
As a car lot for that area and to change it to a C-3 where they can have a car lot and have vehicles in the area with the...
And you're okay with the existing C-2 uses that are available to the applicant for the property?
Correct.
Okay. I think...
Mr. Chairman? All right. We are going to take a short break, and we'll reconvene five minutes. Okay?
Okay, we will return to order. Mr. Urban?
We were at the point of getting a motion.
Okay, so we're back to Mr. Finney.
So, just for point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Finney has made a motion, I think, at this point, he's going to restate his motion is where we are, so he has made a motion to deny, and he's going to restate his motion after he had a moment to compose his thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Mr. Finney, the floor is yours.
All right, given testimony by residents of the area, the zoning change is not appropriate. In addition, there have not been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, which have been substantially altered the basic character of the area.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Baxter?
I think that's adequate, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Falvey, seconds. All right, guys, discussion. Being done, we'll move into roll call vote.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Well, hang on.
Yeah, okay, wait. I usually say this, and I forgot. This is a motion to deny. If you support the motion to deny, your answer is yes. If you do not support the motion to deny, then your answer is no. So I just want to clarify that, and I apologize, I didn't say that before you vote. If you're supporting denial, your answer is yes. If you're not supporting denial, your answer is no.
Then my answer is no.
Okay.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Mr. Douglas?
No.
Mr. Elder?
No.
Mr. Ender?
No.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. And the motion to deny, the zoning map requestment recommendation to Oldham Fiscal Court has failed on a vote of seven...
Well, no, it hasn't failed.
Excuse me.
The motion to deny was upheld.
Mm-hmm. A vote of seven to five. Thank you, Mr. Urban, and that docket is closed.
Okay, so now there's, since the recommendation is to fiscal court to deny, we don't need to go over the development plan at this point. If for some reason fiscal court, if they were to move forward with a recommendation to deny, the applicant wants to go to fiscal court and try to convince them, and fiscal court actually did recommend or did change the zoning map amendment, then they would have to come back for their development plan review to us. But at this point, we typically do not consider the development plan at all.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. We'll take a quick break as we prepare for the next docket. Ten minutes. All right, thank you, everyone. We will come back to order for the next docket item. Ms. Edgar, will you read the docket, please?
Docket PZ 23-020, application has been filed by Verizon Wireless and Vertical Bridge for approval to construct a 155-foot telecommunications tower and related ground facilities and waivers from the landscape buffering and minimum lot area requirements on property located at 7801 West Highway 22 Crestwood.
Thank you, Ms. Brim, or Ms. Edgar. And Mr. Fogel, you have staff presentation?
Yes, good morning. Brian Fogel, Assistant Director, and as what was read into the record, it's a request for a telecommunications tower, and then a couple waivers from the design standards for your all's consideration today, a couple housekeeping things in terms of notifications of the application that was filed, and then the public hearing prior to the time that the applicant files the application, because there's lots of unique circumstances that go about the review and approval of telecommunications towers. They have to send certified letters to adjoining property owners. They did that in early August. They have to run an ad in the Oldham Air newspaper, which they did on August 10th, and then they posted a sign on the property towards the end of August prior to the time that they filed the application with us. Upon filing the application with us, which is what you're all hearing today, we posted it on the county's website on the 29th of August, sent adjoining property owner notices in the mail on September 5th, and then had our legal ad appear in the Oldham Air newspaper on September 7th. The property is on Highway 22 between Crestwood and Orchard Grass Hills. So highlighted in red here is the overall property, which consists of approximately 55 acres. It's near the entrance where Briar Hill Parkway intersects with Highway 22, and the zoning on the property falls in two different commercial zone, or two different zoning districts. The back portion is owned Conservation, which is shaded in green, and then the front portion is owned R2 Residential, and you'll see here shortly that the proposal for the telecommunications tower is located about right here entirely within the R2 zoning district. And here's a map showing where they're proposing to have the tower located at on the overall 55-acre parcel with this square that's right here. And then just an aerial to give you a sense of how far back off of the road it would be from Highway 22, and we'll show you a few more maps here. They would have a leased area right here for the tower and then ground facilities associated with that, with access to a 30-foot-wide access easement on a gravel drive that would go back to here, and then the existing gravel drive would continue to go back to the house that's located on the entire 55 acres. Just a few quick photographs. This is the entrance of the driveway off Highway 22. This is along Highway 22 looking back towards the Crestwood area. This is along Highway 22 looking back towards Orchard Grass Hills and Lake Louisville. And then just a picture of the existing drive as it goes back through the property. I'm going to breeze through this, but you guys stop me or ask questions whenever, because the applicants are here to represent the application. But the request is for a telecommunications tower that would have an overall height of 155 feet. They have reserved areas on this tower for future people to co-locate antennas. On the tower, there is related ground equipment located on a concrete pad. The leased area that they're proposing is 5,625 square feet, which would have a gravel yard. The 12-foot-wide gravel driveway would access the property through a 30-foot-wide access easement, and they're proposing an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire atop of it, and additionally with wood fencing planks in the fence to screen the telecommunications equipment at the ground level. And I've got two things highlighted here, because these are items we're going to discuss as waivers from the telecommunications tower design standards. One would be the size of the leased area, and the other one would be through their landscape buffering requirements. A picture of the proposed tower, just a vertical view of it, fencing around the property, the overall height, 155 feet, with their equipment here, and then space here for future co-locations. Just an overhead view of the actual yard. Distances to adjoining properties, so the closest they are to the nearest property line is approximately 232 feet. And then this particular one shows that the distance to the nearest adjoining residence is 500 feet plus. There is a house on the 55 acres, but they're showing how close it is to the residents that adjoin. So part of where telecommunications towers are different, they're regulated, and you're all's role is also regulated, both in our zoning ordinance and Kentucky Revised Statute 100.987. And one thing that's significant about that is that once we receive the official application, which we received on August 21st, the planning commission has to make a decision within 60 days to either approve it, deny it, or to postpone it, but only with the applicant's agreement in that. If the planning commission does not make a decision within 60 days, the application's automatically approved. In terms of the standards that you all use to judge whether to approve or deny this, the zoning ordinance says that you're all to look at this and find that it complies with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan and the Oldham County Zoning Ordinance, and additionally, you all may ask of the applicant if they have made any reasonable attempts to co-locate their antenna on an existing tower that's in Oldham County. So in terms of compliance with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan's future land map identifies this as agricultural, single-family, which is basically saying that it's large lot undeveloped, and that it might be small lot, single-family if there are access to sewers. In terms of compliance with the Oldham County Zoning Ordinance, in reviewing their application and the design standards for telecommunications towers, they are in compliance with the exception of two areas, and that would be the landscape buffer, which we'll get into here, and then also the minimum lot area for the leased area that they're proposing. If you all grant waivers in those requirements, that would bring their proposal into compliance with the zoning ordinance. And then just a view of the actual zoning ordinance, where it's highlighted with the design standards, the first thing that's highlighted is basically the language that says you all have the authority to grant waivers from any of these design standards that are listed on these pages. And the two things that are highlighted are where they're asking for waivers. One would be in the landscape buffer, which we will talk about here, and then the other would be in the size of the leased area that they're proposing to locate the telecommunications tower and ground equipment. So the first waiver that's being requested is a waiver in the landscape buffer requirement. The design standards say that you're supposed to have a landscape buffer 20 feet in width, and that it have a continuous evergreen screen that will achieve a minimum height of 20 feet. What they're proposing in lieu of that is to install a wood privacy fence to screen the telecommunications facility at the ground level, and then they have a commitment that I'm going to show you here shortly from the property owner of not removing any of the perimeter trees to help screen the view of the telecommunications tower from the adjoining property owners. The thing that I'd kind of like you guys to keep in mind is that we probably need to define what does that mean in terms of perimeter trees? I think I know what that means, but we need to hear the applicant state, well, this is what we mean when we say we'll maintain the perimeter trees. And then the other thing where there would be a waiver request would be in the size of the area. So the design standards say if you're going to lease an area, it has to meet the minimum lot size requirements of the zoning district in which it's located in. When the R2 zoning district, when you don't have access to sewers, the minimum lot area is one acre. And what they're proposing is substantially smaller than one acre just to accommodate the tower and the equipment that they have there, which means they have to obtain a waiver from you all to have a leased area that would be smaller, and the leased area that they're proposing is 5,625 square feet. This is the letter and their justification for asking for the landscape buffer waiver, a copy of the letter from the property owner who'll be leasing the area to the company if it's approved for the telecommunications tower, stating that they are in favor of that, and then their particular reasons why they're in favor of that in their justification statement. So in summary, you all have a request for the telecommunications tower, which is 155 feet tall, with two requests and waivers for a landscape buffer and the minimum lot area. You all, again, need to find that it is in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, that it's in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and you may ask the applicant if they made any attempts to co-locate on an existing tower in Oldham County or nearby. And we do want to remind you that a decision deadline exists of October 20th, that if you all cannot reach a decision today, that we would have to have the applicant agree to extend that deadline, because you're all's next meeting is on October 24th. And with that, that concludes my staff presentation. At some point, I do want to put Jim Siliman's email up on the screen. He sent an email yesterday stating, you know, hey, this is my input in terms of this particular application.
Do we have access to that content? Let's go ahead.
Yes, I've got the email right here, and we're putting it up on the screen. So basically, Jim sent an email yesterday stating that the proposal does not really trigger anything that would require a review from the county engineer's office, because the land disturbance is smaller. It's not in the vicinity of any... Uh, it's not in the vicinity of any mapped blue line streams or located with a 100-year floodplain, that there is an existing driveway entrance off Highway 22, um, and that the proposed use will not generate, uh, sufficient levels of traffic to, uh, require either a traffic assessment or traffic, uh, impact study.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fogel. Anything else from staff? Okay, questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question.
Please.
So, Mr. Fogel, when you talk about the site area being a little over 5,000 square feet, i- is it your, is it staff's intention that there's gonna be a plat that subdivides off that into a separate property to be leased, or is it gonna be just described and leased property from, uh, fr- from the owner of the property?
Could be either. I think that's an applicant's question.
Okay.
Um, they, cuz I think it could be either. There's not a requirement that I know of, and Brian, maybe you can chime in, that it requires, uh, ownership as opposed to lease.
Okay, and, and then just for the clarification of the members of the committee, so on our last proposal, we, we, uh, had Mr. Finney make a motion, and, and we had him actually restate his motion and his grounds. You, you've outlined what the potential findings are here, and those findings are a little bit different, are they not? I mean, they are not required to make the specific findings because of our, uh, Section 340 of the ordinance, because of the state statutes, and because of the Federal Communications Act, the, the findings that you've outlined are adequate findings in this particular situation, assuming that question about co-location is answered to the satisfaction of the commi- uh, of the commission.
Yes, that is correct. In your all's, uh, staff report, and we also have slides when you all get to the, uh, discussion and decision-making process, we'll be looking for three motions. One or two would be addressing the waivers that are requested, and then the third one, uh, would be approval of the telecommunications facility, um, and the, uh, justifications for those are outlined in your all's, uh, staff report. And, and it is, it's a, it's a very, uh, unique type of, uh, request in terms of what you all typically review, um, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Mr. Douglas.
Brian, um, quick question. I know I've sat here on some of these, this is the first time we've ever had, uh, or do you recall, Mr. Urban, minimal lot size waivers or buffer waivers on cell towers?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that, Mr. Douglas. So it's the first time I've heard one of these off, so I've been back for nine months. So this application came in, and I kinda scratched my head and went like, alright. And, uh, in what we, I typically do, I shouldn't speak for the office, I went, I wonder what my predecessor did. So I went back and found, found former, uh, applications and staff reports to just kinda give me some guardrails and start to educate myself on the request. In reviewing the application, um, and then also the requirements in the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance is very black and white. It says, you know, your, your minimum lot size, whether you, whether the, uh, telecommunications company owns it outright, or whether or not they're leasing the property, has to satisfy the minimum lot size requirements for the zoning district in which it lies in, unless you guys have granted them a waiver.
And to add to that, we did have one where the applicant actually went and leased the required size. Uh, that goes back probably, uh, six years ago, maybe. I always have to measure it pre-COVID, um, but the original application and that, we were actually in front of the commission when we discovered that it wasn't, didn't meet the minimum size, and they tabled that hearing, and they went and got a full lease. Is it necessary? Well, their equipment doesn't cover that minimum lot size, which in this case would be an acre.
Okay. I have one final question. I understand that the applicant is indicating, and so is the property owner, the buffer for landscaping for the perimeter, and I will get into it with the applicant, includes the tree line on Highway 22. What effect, if any, would that have on widening of 22 in the future? And I don't know what the proposal is still with the state in widening 22, and what becomes of that buffer when that is removed? Or if, if it doesn't get removed, I don't know.
In, in this area, um, the, the only recommendation for widening would be a continuous left-turn lane. It wouldn't be two lanes in each direction. We just did a study of Kentucky 22, actually from Murphy Lane and Metro all the way out to the Dairy Queen intersection at 329. And, uh, the recommendation here, it does recommend, uh, turning lanes into Briar Hill Park, but no additional improvements other than continuing a turn lane, because there's also, uh, another small subdivision street. If they did, they'd take right-of-way from each side of the, of the highway, so I, I would imagine if they needed additional right-of-way, it would only be about 15 feet. Are there trees within that 15 feet? I gotta believe there are, cuz I'm looking at an aerial map, but it wouldn't take all the trees out of there.
Mr. Douglas, anything else?
I mean, is that something that needs to be a binding element?
Um, well, there is a binding element that says if you're considering the landscape buffer area, Brian has written one that says perimeter trees shall not be removed. The question is, when the state comes in to widen the roadway, that they don't pay attention to binding elements.
Right.
So take that into consideration when you're making your decision.
Anything else? No? Okay, anyone else like questions of staff? Very well. With that, we will move into application or presentation from applicant.
I have a question. Where does the access easement come in for them to get to the tower to maintain it?
That's a question that I would, uh, ask that you hold for applicant, okay? Thank you.
Do I need to be sworn in?
We're gonna get you sworn in. We'll get your names and addresses as we go.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
You would just pull the microphone up a little bit and...
I'm gonna say good morning, cuz it's still morning. It feels like afternoon, but it is still morning. For the record, Russell Brown, uh, an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn, address of 320 North Meridian Street, Suite 1100 in Indianapolis. In addition to being licensed in Indiana, I am licensed to practice law in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Um, with me today is Elizabeth Williams, who is a land planner in our office, and we are here on behalf of the applicants of Verizon Wireless and Vertical Bridge. Staff did a great job of covering, uh, I meant, sir, bringing staff with me on the road to cover many of the elements of what I'm talking about and what I intend to talk about, uh, but walk through kind of our, our statement and why here, and what we've done to get here today. And I will not use the ballot, the entirety of that time. That's the most generous timeframe, uh, in any, any place I've ever practiced. So, uh, we've already talked about site location. This is located along State Highway, uh, State Road 22. It is a request for an approval of a 155-foot telecommunications tower. This property is about 55 acres in size. Um, approximately half of it is agriculturally utilized. And so as we talk about why are we asking for a lot size waiver, and why are we talking about a buffer waiver, the agricultural use is important. The, the landowner does actively, uh, utilize this agriculturally and intends, desires to intend to do so. Uh, so that is part of the reason for the waivers that we've had. As I practice in Indiana and other places in Kentucky, uh, that is an important component of how we cite, uh, how we choose a location and how we cite a proposed tower. Uh, trying to dis- decrease disruption to those agricultural uses as much as possible goes into the site selection and site design. This area was chosen, uh, for a variety of reasons, but on this parcel, the proposed location was chosen just for that reason. One, it utilizes that existing drive, so the existing drive does exist. It's off of, of, uh, 22. Uh, as it exists, it will not be required to be widened or improved, uh, for this use. Uh, but then try to hug it along the tree line. You'll see along that drive in the pictures that staff showed, uh, there is kind of a tree-lined drive as you move, uh, south to north on this property, and try to hug it as, as close as you can to that tree line. There is also overhead, uh, electrical lines that are located, uh, near or adjacent to that tree line, so trying to locate it as close as you can so that you don't have a gravel drive that bisects or disrupts agricultural use of this property. So that's a part of why this was, uh, chosen. It also attempts to utilize those existing trees. When we talk about perimeter trees, the intention would be, uh, of those trees located along Highway 22, and those trees located along the eastern boundary of the property. Those are what we talk about when we talk about perimeter. So if that needs to be clarified, uh, that would be our, our commitment on this location. And this, uh, proposed tower, uh, does have ground space and tower space, uh, for Verizon Wireless, uh, and up to three additional co-locators. Uh, Verizon is the carrier here. Vertical Bridge will be the tower constructor and tower owner. Uh, Vertical Bridge is amongst a number of national, regional or national tower companies who build towers for Verizon Wireless. Call it a custom co-location arrangement. Verizon indicates a need in an area. Vertical Bridge or their counterparts will go out, acquire a lease, uh, opportunity, go through the due diligence process, whether that's local zoning or whether that's PSC, and get the approvals to construct a tower. They will construct it and then enter into a long-term lease with Verizon. Those are usually 25 to 35 years in length, uh, and then Vertical Bridge will also go out and market to other carriers, so you could have, uh, again, up to three carriers at this location. You do have microwave, uh, capability at this location. That's often necessary when you don't have high-speed, uh, fiber internet in the immediate vicinity. So that adds in the, uh, the operations of, uh, this proposed location. Verizon is the, uh, proposed top tenant, so they will take the top center line. That's 145 feet. Uh, this tower would be lit only if FAA requires it. So at 100, generally 199 feet or less, it does not require lighting, but depending on what, uh, surrounding uses are, FAA can require, uh, that. Your ordinance provides, uh, a restriction on what can be, uh, what lighting can include. Believe it complies with FAA. If it doesn't, then obviously FAA would, would trump, but otherwise it would be top of tower and potentially mid-tower as necessary. I'm gonna talk about two, one other thing here before we go back to those waivers. So we are, uh, the citing of cell towers is a very reactive business. You are reacting to customer needs and customer demands. Uh, so we are looking, we are looking in locations where there's a documented gap in service, whether that's, you, I can't make a call from here, which would be a coverage issue. Most places, uh, in Indiana and Kentucky, we don't have a lot of that. We don't have, I can't make any call from here. What we have more of is what we would call capacity issues, and that means that certain times, uh, during the day or during the week, there are too many people accessing the network at the same time. So you have slow, what I call up-through, throughput speeds. It's either slow uploads, slow downloads. It requires me to hang on the network for 30 seconds instead of for three seconds to upload that picture, or to stream movies, or to stream, uh, music, uh, or to send that work email. Um, that, the goal of increased capacity is to decrease the amount of time you are on the network, uh, to, uh, to make that transaction. The analogy I use is that there's too much water in the bucket. There is too many people, there's only so much water in a bucket on a tower, and when you start dragging it out, too many people are dragging it out, and there's no more water to give out. So the goal here is to get you on and off the network faster, allow for that bucket to refill, and the next person to come and take their water, uh, off of the tower. Uh, as you'll notice, this before you is a before and after coverage map. So the dead, kind of the dead center, that blue dot, is the proposed location here. You are seeing, uh, before there seems to be a, a better, uh, coverage in some areas and good in some areas. Uh, at the conclusion of the construction of this tower, you would have best in a large majority of the surrounding areas. The State Road 22 corridor kinda headed north, uh, many, maybe to many of the places that were in the neighborhood that was here before you just a few minutes ago. Uh, but that would provide for enhanced coverage in that area and capacity. It would also offload other towers. So you'll notice, kinda to the left side of that map, um, there's an area that seems to be far away that's provided enhanced capacity by this tower coming on air. What that means is that you are able to better focus the, uh, abilities of the towers that are on air to those, uh, existing areas. The goal in building a new tower is generally to offload 20 to 30% of, of traffic on two sectors. There are generally three sectors on a tower, kind of the, the three antennas, uh, and they, uh, serve a different sector of the community. And so you're trying to offload from two to three other sectors, 20 to 30%. So that's why you have enhanced coverage or capacity, uh, in areas that are not immediately adjacent to this tower, uh, with, when this tower comes on air. The need for towers are, are based on a variety of things, on topography, on, uh, usage patterns. Uh, as you, uh, have more individuals who utilize, uh, wireless coverage as their home internet provider, you have increasing needs for, uh, wireless coverage and towers being closer and closer to residential areas. Now, when, when this first came aboard, I've been practicing for almost 17 years now, we were doing stuff in the middle of cornfields to serve interstates. That's largely what we were doing when we were doing, uh, cell towers. We are now moving closer and closer to residential neighborhoods, moving closer and closer to schools, to commercial centers, to large institutional users, to hospitals, uh, to, uh, to industrial facilities, because those are where the needs are now existing, in parks. Uh, you think about going to a soccer game or a baseball game, what is everybody doing between action? They're all on their phone, and that drives capacity and need, uh, for those, for those towers. Um, when we look for a new site, we always look for co-location opportunities first. And the reason for that is because it cuts down the lead time from about 18 to 24 months from a tower going on air to six months. There's already a tower in there, I gotta go, sometimes go pull a permit, gotta negotiate a lease with that tower owner, and then I can go on air. I don't have to go negotiate, I don't have, find a willing landowner. I don't have to go through negotiating a lease. I don't have to come and see you folks or, or send, uh, information to PSC. We have the ability to go and rapidly deploy. And in a business that's reactive to customer needs, time is money. I have customers who don't, can't provide coverage or can't get coverage, they move to somebody who, who can. And so we always seek co-location opportunities. In the area of need, uh, shown, uh, by Verizon, by their engineers, uh, there are no existing, uh, towers. So there is no co-location opportunity. The nearest tower, uh, according to our records, appears to be about a mile and a half, between a mile and a mile and a half from this location. Uh, that does not meet the coverage objectives of Verizon Wireless, uh, for this site. Verizon, as is required by state statute, uh, has considered the likely impact on nearby land uses and values, and concluded that there is not a more suitable location that can achieve the coverage and capacity objectives identified by Verizon Wireless for this area of both Oldham County as well as adjoining counties. So we believe that this, there is an existing need, uh, Verizon has, Verizon has documented that need, and we believe this is the least impactful mechanism to meet that need. I talked briefly about, you know, the need for, closer to, need for towers closer to residential locations. Uh, approximately half of Kentucky households are wireless-only households, so there's no landline. I think that number's probably a little low, uh, but it hasn't been updated in a number of years. And approximately two-thirds of kids in the state of Kentucky live in a wireless-only household. Uh, so that is, again, why you need continuing to move, uh, this, this capacity and these needs closer to residential communities. About 70% of 911 calls come from a mobile device. Uh, so again, showing why you need enhanced capacity and coverage in these locations. Uh, as it relates to compatible land use, uh, we've, we've long accepted, this property actually has above-ground utility infrastructure. In communities, we've long accepted above-ground utility infrastructure as part of the orderly development of your community. We believe that wireless communication facilities are, are the next generation, are part of that, and they are part of a requirement for the orderly development of, of infrastructure within a community. Back up and talk about the buffering requirement. Your buffering requirement, um, like many, uh, is, we believe the goal of the buffering requirement is to buffer the ground equipment. With 20-foot trees, you're not gonna buffer 150-foot structure, even at full height. With 20-foot trees, you're not going to buffer 150-foot structure, even at full height, especially those planted immediately adjacent to the, to the ground equipment. So what we've done and what we've worked with a landowner and the builder to come up with is to utilize that fence, a fence alternative. Our intention here, and it's not clear in plans, and so this is, this is our mistake. Our intention here is that there would be only a wood fence, that we would not have wood fence plus the chain link behind it. I believe that's a little bit of wasting resources. But we would propose to have an eight-foot-tall wood fence solid at this location to provide for that buffering. In addition, as noted, the, the owner of the property, the lessor, has requested, made this request additionally, that we would commit and make the commitment that we would not remove any perimeter trees in an effort to go above and beyond what your ordinance appears to contemplate with buffering adjacent to the ground, the ground equipment. So we think that that does meet the intent of the ordinance and actually goes above and beyond the intent of the ordinance. As it relates to lot size, I think our position on that would be, as mentioned, that the, the goal here is to decrease disruption to agricultural use. So if you have, if we can fit our equipment and the equipment of up to three additional colocators within a 73 by 73 compound, we think the requirement to lease an acre when you need less than a quarter of an acre is a waste of, of prime usable agricultural property. Many, many communities, I don't know the will of your community, but most communities have, have a strong tie to their agricultural history and want to preserve that, especially those that are actively farmed, as this property is. And so for that reason, we would, we do believe that we meet the setbacks. We don't, we're more than 230 feet from any adjacent property line, more than 500 feet from any residential use, including the residential use on this property. So we believe that, you know, we're not accomplishing a greater setback or we're not asking for a lesser setback by having a smaller space and are more efficiently utilizing this property. So we do believe that we meet the requirement of your ordinance with those two waivers. And we would be happy to answer questions that you have or after neighbors have had their opportunity to try to address any concerns that they raise. But with that, we would ask for your approval of those two waivers as well as the approval of the petition before you today.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else on your team who's going to testify?
No.
Okay. We will then move into questions and testimony from those opposed to the application. Does anyone here wish to speak in opposition to this application? I'll ask that we all, that we get you all stand, we can get you sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Whoever would like to go first, we're going to ask for all of you to provide your name and address as you approach the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. My name is William Lunsford. I live at 7703 Highway 22, right next door to where they plan on putting this thing. My concern is, I've got three issues. Is my property value, will it go down? Two, it's going to be an eyesore. And three, there's not much buffer between Mr. Baxter to Mr. Falvey of Tree Lines, between my property and the farm. And this time of year, things start dying off. When the trees are dead and gone, I am going to be looking at this tower until springtime. And not to mention health benefits, you know, radiation, microwaves, and just, you know, concerns like that. And I just think that it's a, that big of a farm, that that's the only place that they can put it. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Who would like to go next?
Hi there. Mary Ann Stess, 7712 West Highway 22. I'm, I'm within the 200 feet, right across the road. I've lived there for almost 40 years, and it's a wonderful residential neighborhood. That stretch of 22 is residential. I'd just hate to see this stop. I don't, I couldn't hear part of what he was saying about the perimeter fencing, so I don't understand what the, what perimeter he's talking about, whether it's around the cell tower or along 22. I, I don't know which he was, and the letter that we got wasn't real clear about that.
It is just around the cell tower facility itself that there's landscaping required.
Okay, all right. And they're going to leave the ones along 22 intact? Is that the?
That, that is the intent, yes.
Until, of course, they lose their leaves. Okay, I'm concerned about my property valuation. I, I think this is going to be detrimental, and there is no way you can add 155-foot tower with a light on top. I mean, I'm going to look out my front door, and there it's going to be. It seems like to me they could have put it someplace else, like down at Hounds Lane or Chamberlain Lane, where those big open fields are, or on the tower in Crestwood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wishes to go next?
Hello, everyone. My name's Tanya Lunsford. I live at 7703 West Highway 22. Our property adjoins the proposed site of the tower. It is, at best, right about 500 feet in the angle of, you know, where the emissions would lie on our home. What I've researched, the recommended, least recommended distance is 1,000 feet. And even with that, you are still exposed to EMF radiation. With their plans to add future antennas, at least five I saw in there, also ones that, microwave emitters. So all of this pollution is coming into my home, 24/7, you know, you know, just at a ridiculous rate. Another concern I have is the property value going down. You know, I've looked up, it's ranging from what I can understand, anywhere from a decrease of 4% to some as well as 40%. And that, you know, will, is contingent on how close you are to the actual structure. Oh, let's see. As far as the perimeter trees, I believe I understood the attorney saying that they were also going, that included the property line of the adjoining property. Is that correct? So that would be the one on our side of the property. Okay. Yeah, there is an existing tree line there, but, you know, my issue with that is that when there's no foliage on the trees, we're completely bare. You know, and there it will be. And also, you know, there's no protection from the radiation when the foliage is gone, you know, so that's always going to be there. You know, I feel like the minimum lot ordinance that's in it, in effect, was put there for a reason, and probably to, you know, discourage this type of structure from going up in a residential neighborhood. You know, these, this resident or this neighborhood has been there for years, and it's well-established, you know, with the fact that there's not going to be a lot of future development, you know. It's well-established that, yeah. Okay, that's about all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
I'm Carl Slessor. I live at 8,000 West Highway 22 in Crestwood, where two driveways down from this property, on the other side of the road. First, this is a residential area. Everybody out there, it's, you know, home, single-family homes and farms, and not too many farms. And 155-foot tower is going to be an eyesore for everybody who lives there, including us. In the summer, it's not too bad. You got leaves, you got trees, so it's not bad. There's a buffer there with the trees. In the winter, there are no leaves on those trees, and everybody's going to be looking at those towers. And our, our property values are going to go down. And from what I understand, the proposers, the reason they picked this site so close to the road is because it didn't disrupt the landowner's tillable acreage. And I mean, I really don't care about the landowner's tillable acreage. I mean, I worry about the rest of the residents in this area. And you can move that, right now it's 230 feet from the right-of-way of 22. That's a big farm right there. And there's no reason why they couldn't put it back about 500 or 600 feet away from the road, so it wouldn't be quite so obnoxious to the people who live around here. It would still be on their tillable acreage, and it wouldn't take any more acreage there than it does now. It would just cost Verizon more to run it back that driveway farther. And other than the homeowners themselves that are leasing the property, it might be closer to their house, but it won't be closer to anybody else's house. And let's see, what else? I don't understand, I agree with the last opponent, that there was a reason why they have a one-acre requirement for a development like this in, in our area. And the only reason I've heard that to shrink it down to 5,000, whatever it was, 5,000 square feet was, was because it would take up less room on their farm. And again, you know, the neighbors don't care how much room it takes on their farm. They're, they're leasing that property. They're making money on it. I'm not making any money on it. Nobody else in this room is making money on it except them. So, you know, I, I think they should, I, I, I do not agree with 5,500 square feet or whatever it is that they're using versus the one acre. At least make them, take the whole acre and also put a buffer that eight-foot-high fence is, as the proposer said, that eight-foot-high fence, even a 20-foot-high screen is going to not obscure a 155-foot tower. But it will help if we do have trees around it rather than an eight-foot-high fence. They probably would have put the fence there regardless, in my opinion. They wouldn't just leave it there without some kind of protection. So we would prefer, I think most of the neighbors would prefer to keep the buffer requirement in there and ask them to use their full one acre and possibly move it back farther away from the road. One other thing, I'm sorry. Surely to goodness, there are other schools, commercial properties in the region here that they could use. I mean, it sounded like they picked this place because it was cheaper for them. But it's, it's not helping anybody that lives there. We're, you know, this is, I've lived for 25 years, and it's been a very nice place to live. But when you look out your window and you're seeing this 155-foot tower, it's not something that you want to do, and your property values are probably going to go down. And you're going, you can just tell people, I live across the street from that tower. And they, they'll find you right away because they can see it. So anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Joe Hamilton, 7607 West Highway 22, Crestwood. Good morning, Board. Thank you all for being here, listening to us. I have several questions about this, and, you know, I, I don't know what the, what the issue is. They're saying that there's not good service in the area. You know, I don't have any trouble. I don't know anybody around me that has any trouble with cell service or anything like that. And the site of this is not going to be conducive to the neighborhood. You know, yes, there's a tree line now, but give it a couple of months, you're going to see this. Are there going to be any, is there going to be a noise created by this thing? Is there going to be a hum or anything like that? I've been around some that did have that. My wife has PTSD, and she can hear a nade from a mile away. So if there is any of this stuff, it's going to cause her some issues. She has severe headaches as it is now. So having something like this is going to make that worse. And our property does adjoin this. I'm not sure why this couldn't be located somewhere, you know, either east or west of this location in a commercial area. There's no reason why it couldn't be located in one of those areas. So I don't know what the minimum distance that they're talking about as far as having a tower one place or another. I don't know. I don't know what that is. I know this is going to have lightning rods or lightning arrestors on it. Is that going to cause lightning to start be drawing towards this area? So, you know, I don't, I don't want to see that as well. How many additional antennas or microwave dishes are they going to put on this tower? You know, in the future? I know they're going to have so many at this point to start, or that's what they propose. Okay. And he's saying, you know, using this as agricultural-use land. And they don't want to encroach on that too much. That's why they want a variance on the property. Move it to a commercial area, then you don't have to worry about agricultural problems. And I just think it'd be a detriment to our property values. I just don't think it's a good thing. I don't think it's a good location for it. So that's pretty much all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. With that, we'll move into questions by the commission of applicant and those who have provided opposition testimony. Who would like to go first? Mr. Falvey?
For the applicant. Maybe you can address some of people's concerns. Can you speak to the property values? I'm sure you've experienced this before. Are there statistics, anything you can share that helps alleviate the idea that their property values will decrease?
I will do my best. And yes, I hear it with some frequency. I can answer in a couple of different ways. One is that high-speed internet is a determining factor for many people when they're looking for residential opportunities. In fact, a recent appraisal guide has indicated that the absence of high-speed internet is a detriment to the sale, the salability of a piece of property. Given that approximately 20% of U.S. households access high-speed internet through their wireless carrier, we do believe that infrastructure of wireless, enhanced wireless coverage, I'm not saying you can't make a call from here. I'm saying enhanced wireless capacity, so much that, so that you could stream a TV, television show off of it, you could work remotely and do a Zoom call off of that. That's the type of capacity we're talking about needs here. So we think, I think the absence of that is actually a detriment. This tower would provide that enhanced wireless capacity to surrounding, the surrounding community. So that's one way that I think it actually is a benefit because it provides opportunities for high-speed internet for many people who don't have other access to it. The second is, we have, we have, Verizon has done, engaged appraisers to do longitudinal studies, where you take a, over a period of time, similarly situated properties, those that have a tower, those that don't have a tower, those that had a tower before and then have a tower, and what does that mean on impact of, of property? And determine that there is no substantially significant difference based on proximity to a tower. That, you can believe me or not believe me, but that's studies that we have seen in Indiana, Ohio, and Kentucky. So we've, we've seen those studies done rural, urban, and suburban, where there is no meaningful statistically significant difference in this time on market, the sale price in, in those. And I will tell you that every home requires two things, a willing seller and a willing buyer. I live in a very dense neighborhood, and I tried to go to- I live in a very dense neighborhood, and I tried to go to receiving my high-speed internet through wireless-only provision, and I couldn't get it. And I live very close to multiple towers and could not get that, so I ditched that and my wireless. And I would like to have better wireless coverage in my neighborhood, but I do not have that. So I think that there might be folks who that's not their cup of tea, and that's where they don't, they don't want to live next to a tower. There might be others who say, "That's, well, that's great. That means I have enhanced coverage in this location." Again, it's not, maybe not for everybody, but I think a willing seller and a willing buyer, there are people who make that determination based solely on wireless coverage and access to high-speed internet.
Thank you. Can I continue? Their concern about the radiation, what, any radiation comes off the towers and even the humming sound, is there any sound emanated from the tower?
Well, I'll start with one thing, and then your counsel can jump in if I'm overstepping my bounds, but, you know, both your ordinance, Kentucky statute and federal statute provide that, you know, consideration of health concerns are outside the purview of this body as a local zoning jurisdiction. I'll start with that statement, and then I'll go back and say that, you know, the American Cancer Society has long had on their website a study indicating that they've not found a causal connection between proximity to cell towers and increased cancer activity in surrounding those. I know there are other things out there said by other people that contradict that. The American Cancer Society, I believe, is a reputable source. So that's, on that issue. On noise, if they're functioning, when they're functioning correctly, no, there should be no noise from the tower. In the same way that sometimes you have noise off of overhead wires, overhead power lines, you know, that might be from the wind, those types of things, but them themselves should not generate any additional noise by the operation of the tower. As far as lighting goes, again, the tower may be lit if FAA requires it. Ground lighting, there is no ground lighting, other than a security light on the equipment, on the ground equipment itself, so there would be no lighting. One other thing I did not talk about in a case in chief as it relates to noise, what Verizon does install generators, emergency power generators on these locations. They're either diesel-fed or natural gas-fed. Those are tested on a monthly basis, but otherwise only operate if and when there's a power emergency so that the wireless network remains on air. So that would be noise, but it would be testing, except when it's running in those emergency situations.
Okay, thank you. And just one other question, and I don't know if it's for the applicant or staff. This tree buffer on 22, he doesn't control that, the, or do you, under this lease?
So we control, we don't control that, but the landowner is the one who's made the commitment.
Right.
So the landowner controls that, the landowner is making a commitment that they would not take that down. Now, to the extent it's acquired as right-of-way, then we no longer, neither the landowner nor the applicant would control that. But we, we've agreed and the landowners agreed as it would be a binding requirement that they not, they not take anything down along 036.
Yeah, so you've both agreed on that?
Correct, yes.
And Mr. Falvey, the landowner had to sign the application, so they've agreed to be bound by whatever conditions are imposed here.
Okay.
And the letter in the file, actually, is from the, from the landowner as well, and states that, that he's agreeing that he will not take down trees on the perimeter of the property.
All right, thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Falvey? Who else would like to ask questions? Ms. Davis?
Is the access easement included in this 5,625 square feet?
It is not, no.
It is not?
No.
So who maintains that easement?
So we mean, we have an access right, we have a repair requirement. If we go in with equipment and it's torn up, we have a requirement to repair and replace it. We have an opportunity to repair and replace it if it falls below standard. So as the tenant, we have an obligation, if we cause a damage, and we have an opportunity if it needs to be repaired so that we can access it. It's also, that 30-foot easement also is where we will run our utilities. So you have power and telco that would run back from the right-of-way in that 30-foot easement. So it's not all just for access.
So it's not included in the lease?
It's not included in that lease space, no, but it is an access right, a recorded access right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Let me try to word this way I can understand it myself. On the studies that you did on the coexistence of other cell towers in the area, generally staff or us were presented documentation of that. I didn't see that within our packet.
Yeah, I do have a letter, a notarized statement from a Verizon Wireless RF engineer, which indicates that there are no additional towers that are for colocation opportunity that meet their needs. I'm providing you sworn testimony today to that effect as well.
And that is, I would assume that's, I'm not going to assume anything, that also includes the diagrams of where those towers are and the span of those towers is what you're testifying to? You've viewed those?
I have viewed them, and I have, I have one in my possession that says that there's not, the towers, the closest towers are approximately 1.4 miles outside of, away from this proposed location, and that does not meet the needs of Verizon Wireless in this area of the community.
And at one PowerPoint presentation you provided, those black dots where those coexisting towers, are those just towers in the area?
These are tow, the black dots there are towers that Verizon is currently located upon.
Okay, but you didn't include in those diagrams, are those coexisting towers? Or any other towers in that area? Because we usually see those.
I, I have, I just provided you the testimony that there's nothing within a mile and a half of.
I know you did. I'm not disputing your testimony, I'm just saying that we were not provided that data.
What about the tower grid map? The tower grid map, it showed all the towers in the area?
And while you were researching that, was there any studies done? Because I'm not going to get into about property values and all that stuff. Was there any studies done about any environmental effect on animals or anything that has to do with, I'm not sure what the word I want to use.
RF.
RF?
Radio.
Well, mainly about if there's any impact on animals in the area that could be, you know, listed on the endangered species list? Because that's one thing the federal government gets into where you install a tower, you did a study that says there's no spotted owls, or there's no, whatever the case is. You know what I'm talking about because you are familiar with this.
I do. I mean, what we would be required to do would be if we were taking down trees, for example, those would be things that we would have to make those types of environmental studies. I can tell you from, from a bird perspective, not where I practice in Indiana and Kentucky, but I know the further east you go, sometimes they have challenges with birds nesting in these towers, and so they have to make those accommodations so they don't do so. So those are, so, no, to my knowledge, there is no environmental impact as it relates to endangered species from the proposed.
I just wanted that on record. And then last, my question is that I think Ms. Davis mentioned about the 30-foot easement on the roadway, or the driveway. The equipment that's going to be coming through there, will there be any, she mentioned, or you mentioned that if there's anything that has to be removed, you know, whatever the case may be, is there a lot of equipment, heavy equipment that comes through there with the cranes?
So, so, yeah, so you would have, when it's stacked initially, when it's, it'll be stacked onsite, so it won't be built, sometimes built offsite and brought on to locate. So that would be done potentially by a crane at 150 feet. It might not require too big of a crane to do that. Otherwise, it is simply, you know, it's box trucks or less that are coming through there. When you're putting up new antennas on the tower, that's often done by a heavy-duty pickup truck and some crazy man or woman who climbs the tower and does it. But otherwise, it is done simply by, with a truck, a vehicle. There's monthly maintenance checks that are done, but those are a truck or less.
Okay. Just.
Jay, can you put the overhead on for us? And while Jay's doing that also, Elizabeth here has the application. I'm just going to let you guys look at that real quick. It's literally like this thick, and in terms of providing you all copies in our ordinance, but more particularly in the KRS statute, there's a lot of proprietary information in there that if someone makes an open records request of us, unless there's a court order that says we have to share that, whoever fulfills that open records request, and I'm assuming that would be me as the case manager, is liable for criminal charges. You know, so if you feel like someone's being evasive or not sharing information with you, it's not because they're being evasive, there are proprietary informations in here. It does specifically say we are allowed to share any types of maps. And the map that I think may help answer your question about other towers will be up here on your screen.
Yeah, so, so shows, I think, I believe this tower is probably the closest. Based on the coverage map, my guess is that that is a tower that Verizon is already on. So if you'll notice, if you look at the coverage map that's on the screen, the black dot that is to the, what would be the southwest of the, of the proposed location, I believe, is that tower there. This tower appears to be probably the next closest from the proposed location. It does not appear that Verizon is on that tower. This tower Verizon appears to be on as well. So from, from the three closest towers, Verizon is on two of the three of them, and this tower was determined to not meet the coverage objectives that Verizon is attempting to accomplish at this location.
And what about the tower near 71?
Get your mic on.
Oh, sorry.
And the tower just north of, I guess that'd be north, I don't know.
Yeah, it appears to be north of 71, yeah. Verizon doesn't appear to be on either of those towers, but those are too far north out of the area that we're seeking to provide coverage.
I appreciate you putting that on record, thank you.
Mr. Douglas, anything additional? Okay, who else has questions? Mr. Marsh? Ms. Jones will get you next.
In the event that the land use minimum lot waiver was not granted and you had to go to one acre, is there anything that compels you to relocate? Your thoughts of where that would be, where the tower would be located?
I'm speaking a little out of school because we've not talked about this with the landlord, but what I can tell you is, if there was a change in the lot, in the size, in the lease area, my guess is that that would be lines on a piece of paper, and there would be no apparent change to a passerby that the lease area was one acre in size versus 5,600 square feet in size.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Marsh?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Can I comment?
Barry, hang on, hang on, Ms. Jones.
And so, counsel, let's just say the lease area was an acre. My assumption is, is that you all would still use 5,700 square feet or whatever it is, that's what you need, and you would allow the landowner, if it was an acre, to use the other 42,000 square feet for tillable ground, right?
That would be my presumption of, there would be a contractual arrangement to that very effect. So it is lines on a piece of paper. There may be dollars that have to exchange as it relates to that, but it would likely be lines on a piece of paper.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
A lot of the opponents were concerned about the proximity of this to, you know, their homes. What is the reasoning for not putting it deeper into more the middle of the property? It would take the same, the road's already there, so it's not taking any more usable land to put it deeper into the property and away from the surrounding homes.
So generally, when we're looking at a site, we're trying to comply with setback requirements, which I believe, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe here are 110% of the height of the tower. So that's 165 feet plus or minus. So that's what your ordinance gives us as guidance about where a tower should be located in proximity to a property line. So we exceed that at this location. Beyond that, it comes, there's a cost associated with obviously moving, running utilities further back. And frankly, my experience is that often the request to move it somewhere else is because it moves it out of my site and into somebody else's site. And so if you're moving it further to the north, it's getting closer. This, this property is surrounded largely by residential property. So you're moving it away from residential properties that have a Highway 22 address and moving them into a neighborhood to the north or closer to a neighborhood to the north. So that, I don't know that, there might be different people who are here in opposition today, but I think you would just be changing people who would be in opposition to it based on proximity to their home. So, so we're complying with the ordinance, that's point number one. Point number two is that, you know, we believe this, this location provides the best opportunity to utilize those trees. If we moved it further to the north, we could have to disrupt some of those trees that are further to the north, but we could stay out of that. But we just complied with the ordinance is why we chose that distance off of the right-of-way.
Anything else? Further questions? Very well, we will move into, Bobby, please, I'm sorry.
What's the provisions if the tower's abandoned? What's the provisions if the tower's abandoned in 10 or 20 years for cleanup?
So I believe your ordinance has a requirement as it relates to tower removal. Most of the leases have a requirement for the tower to be removed by, by the tenant. There's a, generally a self-help right in that. So if I am the landowner, you've taken all your equipment down and stopped paying me rent, you're in breach, I can go on a self-help, and I could take it down and build back to the company to do that. Your ordinance, I know, has a requirement as it relates to removal. Sometimes there are bond requirements, some municipalities have a bond requirement.
There are bond requirements in our regulations, so they would bond the removal cost in perpetuity.
Okay, any further questions from the commission? All right. With that, we will move into, where are we? Rebuttal from applicant.
I'll be brief. I think you guys asked most of the questions that I intended to provide answers to on A couple, couple points that I'll make. You know, the buffer relief that we're asking for is, I want you to make sure you all understand what we're asking for. We're asking for relief from buffering immediately adjacent to the tower equipment. So in the 20 feet outside of our 75 by 75 compound, we're asking to not have to put 20-foot evergreens that will eventually get to 20-foot tall. So a property owner who lives 500 feet away from, from the tower base will, would receive minimal relief from a 20-foot-tall tree if we were required to put it, to put it in. We believe the solution, and I would suggest this is an either-or question, we will either commit to maintaining those perimeter trees or be required to comply with your buffer requirement. So I think there's much more benefit to surrounding property owners by committing, a commitment related to maintaining the exterior trees. There was a number of comments about why don't you move this to a commercial area? Looking at the zoning map, in the immediate proximity, there is not a significant amount of commercial property nearby. We also have to have a willing landowner who's willing to, to lease this prop, their property for a long period of time, 25 to 30, 30 years, sometimes 50, sometimes 99 years. They have to be willing to commit their property for that purpose. So I can't force someone to go in. When we were looking in the designated area that needed, the coverage objectives could be met, there was one willing landowner, and that's the property that's before you today. So this is an oppo, this is, this is the opportunity in this location to provide this need is with this landowner at this property. Further, your ordinance doesn't require us to go into commercial property, to commercial areas. We have the opportunity to come here and ask to go in. I'm not asking for a waiver as it relates to the zone in which we're located. We're permitted to be here with your approval. So that's why we're not in a commercial area, I don't have a willing landowner, there's nothing in the search ring that meets the criteria, and your ordinance allows. And, and your ordinance allows us to go at this location. Otherwise, I think we've covered almost everything that I intended to, to talk about. We've talked about the lot size waiver. We've talked about property values. We've talked about noise and light. Talked about what our setback is related. And, and, you know, as it, as it relates to this being an eyesore, as I mentioned in our case in chief, this is part of our current society. To have wireless towers is part of, of what the orderly development in our communities requires. As you look at the zoning map, there are a huge number of residential uses in this area. And my guess is that, I can tell you, there's three, there's two adults and a 14-year-old who thinks he's an adult living in our home. And there are about three wireless devices per person in our home. I have an Apple Watch, I have an iPad, I have a phone. My son has an iPad. He has a computer he uses for school that has the ability to get on our wireless network. Hasn't, has a, an Apple Watch. And my wife has an Apple Watch and, and a, which is on the network and, and a computer and, and her phone. So I think there are more, there are, I know, I don't think there are. There are more devices than people in the United States that are accessing our network each day. And that, that need is real. This is a significant investment by Verizon and, and by Vertical Bridge that they would not be making if the need did not exist in this immediate area. So with that, happy to answer any further questions or otherwise we would ask for your approval today.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Questions, or excuse me, rebuttal or cross-examination from anyone opposed? Please.
Carl Sletter again. The applicant has stated that they're not gonna tear down, they plan on not tearing down the trees that are lining Highway 22 that sort of semi-buffer the property. But that doesn't mean that they're not gonna fall down from some other reason, they may die. You know, the, the state may come in and take them and because they gotta widen the roads, whatever. And there we will be looking at that 155-foot tower. It sounded like the applicant a minute ago said that, well, if you're gonna make us do a buffer, then we're gonna tear down the trees. I don't know whether that's what he meant or that's what I heard, but that's what I, that is what I heard, which I don't think that's a, a sort of a fair way to do this thing. And you leave the trees and maybe you should be putting the buffer anyway. And, and again, I, I don't know about the one-acre deal. I mean, if you have a one-acre deal, I don't know whether you would need to buffer the whole thing rather than lease it all out to farmland. It sort of defeats the purpose of a buffer. Anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, two things real quick. Number one, I've worked for the Crestwood Post Office for 23 years and I have never had a spot where my phone didn't work. Number two, AT&amp;T just put through super-speed internet down 22. So, you know, we're covered. That's all.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Okay, so part of his justification is the coverage map or the coverage area. And from what I'm seeing, I mean, there is some difference, but it's not that great really to justify putting the tower there. I get great coverage at my home already, so it's not an issue for me. I'm not a Verizon customer, but, so that may be why I do. As far as alternate locations, I feel like there could be a better spot on that property, which would be less invasive to everyone. And that was on the west corner of it. There's already tree lines in place there. And the nearest home is, I believe, not even 500 feet as ours is to the current location. Yeah, and I feel like they chose this specific location just because it is gonna be the cheapest and easiest way to get it there with no regard to the neighboring residences. I also heard him say that cell towers are being placed by schools and churches, daycares. Well, I've done research and those have been denied on, in, around schools for the reasons of the EMF pollution that they put out. Another thing I noticed, he was saying, well, this was the reason that they chose that spot was because that was the only landowner they could find willing to lease that spot. This shows that the community does not want these cell towers here. We've got one person out of all that area and that was the only one that would be willing to do it. I don't know if they're suffering from some kind of financial setback or what their motivation is, but it doesn't seem like a smart move. One day that farm is gonna dissolve, it's inevitable. And, you know, their property value will be diminished as well. So I don't feel like it's smart on their part. And I just, I don't understand the motivation there. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you much. Anyone else?
I understand their proposal of everybody needs high-speed internet, supposedly. I don't, I have the lowest speed that you can get. I don't have cable TV either. So it's like, you know, not always new is always good. So that's, that's kind of my feeling on that. And I don't think people would look at buying a house there saying, that's a nice house, but I really don't wanna look at a cell tower. And I still think that there's some places that are close enough, commercial areas, that it could be put. You know, they talked about maybe moving it to the back portion of his area. And they said, well, then people back there are gonna complain. But obviously in the back of the area, there's a lot, lot bigger buffer zone as far as trees and everything are concerned as to where it's going right now. Because right now, there's maybe a single row of trees as a buffer. Where in the back there's probably 300 or 400 feet of trees as a buffer. So placement is everything. And the looks of it in Florida, where we go in the wintertime for a couple of weeks, there's a place down there, they have cell towers. And their cell towers look like that, which makes it a lot better if you had to have one. That way, this one here, you don't have to worry about the trees as much. Thank you.
I'll just have one request. If this goes through, I would have rather looked at 20-foot, 30-foot tall trees than a wood, a wood fence that's gonna rot and fall apart in five years. And it's only eight foot versus 20 or 30 foot. That's just my opinion.
All right, anyone else? Very well, we'll move into the final statement from anyone with the opposition. Anyone wish to make a final statement? Very well. Mr. Brown, do you have a final statement to offer?
I'll be very brief. I'm sure you're agree like I am. Thank you for your attention and questions today. And we do believe that this location meets the objectives of your ordinance. The waivers we have requested, we believe, are reasonable. And, and I'll be clear, first of all, I wasn't threatening and hope no one took it that I was threatening about the buffer, the, the fence versus the, the retention of the trees. That, that is a commitment offered in exchange for the relief from the buffering requirement. But if the buffering requirement is, is removed, I think we would, we would respectfully request that our commit, our obligation to build the, or to maintain the perimeter trees, those were, those were given in consideration for each other. So that's, I, I wanna, I just wanna make sure I'm on the record on that issue. This is a, a, a battle or discussion. Battle's probably too strong a word. Discussion that we have every time we come and put a, a new wireless communication facility in a community where there is not one. It is about change, it is about fear, it is about what's it going to do to my property. And I understand it, I'm sympathetic to it. I sat on a Board of Zoning Appeals in the state of Indiana when I was in law school and heard them about my neighborhood. So I've sat where, where you sit, where the neighbors sit. Ultimately, those towers were approved. A few short years later, I, I sold a property that was 600 feet from a cell tower and with no negative impact to my pocketbook. And I sold it in 2007, or sorry, 2009, which was not the best time in the world to sell a home, but sold it to a profit. So I, I'm not standing up here just citing statistics, not having ever sat in the shoes of you as the decision-maker or those in the, the audience who are, are concerned, rightly concerned about what it will do for their property. We do believe that we are in compliance with the ordinance as provided with those two waivers. We believe that our justification for the waivers is appropriate and would ask for the approval of the waivers as well as the approval of the application before you today.
Mr. Urban?
I'm sorry, I have a question that I just figured out and I should have done this earlier. But on page C3 in our, in your packet that you gave us, this is a site plan. It has an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with three rows of barbed wire atop, on the plan. That's what was submitted.
Correct.
What you're proposing is a eight-foot plank fence as an alternative if we were to approve the landscape buffer. And that would be a binding element if we did. If the landscape waiver were to be denied, what would be your plan?
We would do the chain-link.
And landscaping?
Well, we would have no choice because we wouldn't have a waiver. So we would do chain-link.
You wouldn't consider doing the plank fence plus the landscaping?
I, I, no. The cost is, the cost differential between plank and chain-link would be absorbed. We, we would need that cost differential to pay, to pay for the landscaping and to renegotiate our lease because we don't have lease space for, for that.
Do you have any evidence of what the cost difference is? We hear that all the time. It seemed to me the chain-link fence and barbed wire is pretty expensive compared to wood.
I, I don't have any evidence that I can provide to you, but I can tell you that I think from the client's perspective, that's why they were willing to make the trade of doing the wood fence and cost of maintaining that was in lieu of doing the landscaping.
Okay. Just wanted to give the commissioners that information.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. So public portion of the hearing is now closed. And we will move into decisions. Mr. Urban?
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Urban interjects, I think it's important for the members of the commission to understand that there is a separate part of KRS Chapter 100 that deals with the regulation of cellular antenna towers. Historically, I believe that this section of the statute was likely enacted because of some conflict between state law and federal law and issues by local communities to regulate cellular towers into extinction, essentially was the, was the plan. So seeing this conflict and recognizing the need for cellular towers and these types of communication systems to be put into place, the state enacted the statute that, that governs this. And so, for example, the findings that Mr. Fogel pointed you to that are less than or different than what we normally consider, those are contained as a part of the regulatory scheme enacted by the state in, in this part of the statute. In addition, the statute provides that in regulating the placement of cellular antenna towers, a planning commission shall not regulate the placement of such tower on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that these facilities comply with the regulations of the FCC according to those, those frequencies. You can't institute a moratorium upon the sighting of a tower. You can't charge an excessive fee in order to, for them to be able to ask to, to file such an application. And, and there's some other provisions on there that, that this body and, and the fiscal court would be restricted from regulating. In addition, just to make sure, I know there was a concern by Mr. Douglas that maybe there was some information that was omitted or not provided to you all as a part of this. And the statute further provides what the applicant has to submit. What is in your all's ordinance is specifically governed by and mirrors what is in Chapter 100, 987, that says what has to be put in the application. And it further indicates that there is the proprietary information that is confidential and that the local planning commission shall deny any public requests for inspection of that information under the Open Records Act or otherwise. So I, I just wanna be clear, and I think it was cleared up, but I don't think that the applicant failed to give you information. I think the applicant gave you everything and perhaps more that they were required under the statute to give you. I think that staff consciously omitted some of that information because of trying to comply with the state statute. So I, I don't want there to be some kind of belief that they have more and they're not telling you. They told staff everything. It's just that, that staff didn't necessarily provide you because they were trying to comply with the state statute, okay? So I felt like that was important for you all to have as context. This is a different animal. It is not a typical application for a subdivision or for a development plan as it relates to building a shopping center. This i- i- is a specific animal that is dealing with the interaction with the federal statute as well. And so the, the information that has been provided is in compliance with the federal statute and our state statute and our ordinance. And in addition, the findings are dictated by that as well. So I just thought that was important for you all to be aware of.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter.
I'm just gonna add, and I think Brian would agree since he's standing there, that this application was actually delayed a couple of months because the information hadn't been submitted. So he didn't process the application until everything, according to the requirements, was submitted.
That is correct.
All right. Let's move into this decision process. Mr. Urban, frame it up for us.
Well, the first thing is the waiver for the minimum lot size. And as you heard in the testimony, whether they leased an acre or the square area that they are desiring, they would only put their equipment on that square area and the remainder would just be still farmland. So there are sample motions on page four in your staff report. Actually, that is, it's on page five for the lot area. And let's see, there is a binding element that the proposed condition of approval, rather, the minimum lot area waiver shall only apply to the application considered at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing.
All right.
So that's the first consideration is the waiver for the minimum lot area.
All right, let's, let's stop there and see what we have in terms of either motions or discussion. or discussion on this topic.
I was just gonna ask, you're asking for discussions now?
Discussion's fine.
So, if the minimum lot waiver is based on the 5,625 square feet, is what we're asking from Section 06-020 from the 43,650?
Yeah, one acre, right.
If somebody makes a motion on the landscape buffer waiver and does something different, will that change that waiver on the minimum lot area if you delineate that as square footage? So, which one do you take first?
I would, I would, yeah. I would think they would have to modify maybe their lease to include the landscape buffer area, or the property owner would just have to allow them to put it on the property that isn't in the lease.
So, in essence, the lease would need to be renegotiated?
Yes.
Would it help if we did the landscape buffer waiver request first?
Yes, I would, my question, my hesitation is only I don't know what the additional minimum lot area requirement would be if they had to also include landscape material.
All right. So, as we're considering these, we'll need to keep that linkage in mind.
Could you say on the lot area that it be no less than, because that would cover if we needed, that the lot area be no less than the 5,600 square feet? That way would, we could go greater, but we couldn't go smaller.
That would work.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to start with consideration of the landscape buffer waiver.
Okay.
All right, let's frame that one up, Mr. Urban.
All right. So, that's the one that's on page four. There are suggested motions for either approval or denial of the landscape buffer waiver. And it is a waiver from landscape buffer requirement, Section 340-080, number two, that a landscape buffer of 20 feet in width shall be provided and contain a continuous evergreen screen that will achieve a minimum of 20 feet in height. And so, if you were gonna make a motion to either approve or deny, I think you could do it based on the evidence and testimony that you heard today.
Which includes a commitment from applicant and property owner to maintain the peripheral tree mass.
That's if you were gonna waive it, if you were gonna make a motion to approve. There you would include that the, the evidence was that they wanted to maintain as much agricultural use of the property. Motion to deny would be based on, I guess, evidence and testimony presented by the adjoining property owners, and the question of whether or not the perimeter trees would, not that they would be removed intentionally, but eventually either the state would take them for road widening, or that there is the risk and potential of them dying, and also the seasonal change of the canopy. I did not do that yet. If you were gonna go with the approval of a landscape waiver, there are three conditions of approval. Landscape buffer waiver shall only apply to the application considered at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing. Number two is that an eight-foot-tall wood plank privacy fence shall be incorporated into the perimeter fencing to screen the telecommunication facility at the ground level. And number three is that the perimeter trees shall not be removed.
All right. Everybody clear or questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, when it says that the buffer should contain a continuous evergreen screen, is that saying that the, the trees around it would continually be green and have foliage on them?
Yes, that they're not deciduous. They're evergreen in nature.
Okay. Further questions? Floor is open for a motion. Mr. Ender?
As it relates to docket PZ-23020, with the, with regards to the landscape buffer, I would move to deny the landscape buffer waiver. I do think, in this particular case, per Section 340-8080, number two, that a landscape buffer of 20 feet high and a width that should contain a continuous evergreen screen that would achieve a minimum of 20 feet in width and height is appropriate in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Ender. Mr. Baxter, anything additional?
The only clarification, you, you said width and height. I don't believe the ordinance requires for width and height. I think it is height only. And, and so, understanding, I mean, the trees, they can start out at whatever, I don't know what the minimum is, but they, they're supposed to grow to 20 feet, is the idea, right?
Correct.
So, they could be four feet tall, and however long it takes them to get to 20 feet.
We have standards in our landscape requirements, and I'm not sure exactly what those are, but they would have to comply with our landscape regulations for the size and spacing.
It shows both in here. Not sure if it translates to the comprehensive plan, but...
It says the landscape buffer is 20 feet in width.
They're looking it up.
Either, either way, it'd have to comply with our regulations.
There is the, our landscaping standard in the zoning ordinance states that all required plant material shall meet the following minimum size criteria at the time of installation for evergreen trees. It specifies a height of six foot.
All right. Counsel, do we have an adequate motion on the floor?
You do, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Do I have a second? Who said that? Thank you, Ben. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Can I, I do want to clarify one thing, Mr. Chairman, just so that, that everyone's clear about it. I guess, because counsel made a statement that there's a, they had proposed a plank, solid wood fence, and they've indicated that if this is denied, that they would install the chain-link that was shown on the initial plan, and they would put a landscape buffer around it. And just for clarification purposes, I believe this also relieves them of the perimeter buffer, the Highway 22 buffer requirement, that they were gonna maintain the, the landscaping along Highway 22, just so that everyone's clear about that. So, for example, if the trees fall down on Highway 22, yes, they've got these evergreens back where they are, but they're not obligated anymore to maintain by the roadway.
Thank you for that. All right, everybody clear? Okay. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Urban, can you clarify support, again, denial or approval where it sets as the motion is stated?
Good. So, this is a motion to deny the landscape buffer waiver request. And if you support denying it, you're gonna answer yes. If you do not support the denial, then your answer is no.
Thank you. Everybody good? All right, here we go.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
No.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
No.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to deny the landscape waiver, buffer waiver, was upheld on a vote of eight to three. Okay.
Okay. Given that, the next waiver consideration is the minimum lot area waiver. And what you heard from the counsel for the applicant makes sense that if you are in consideration of approving the minimum lot area, that the waiver from the minimum lot area standard, Section 060020, of 43,560 square feet, or one acre, to allow a leased lot area of no less than 5,625 square feet. And again, that no less than, they can then, they can't get any smaller, but they would potentially get larger for, to accommodate the landscape area. That made sense to me. Did I hear that correctly?
All right. Everybody clear? Will, what you have?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, let's go.
Reference PZ-23020. I make a motion that we move to approve the following minimum lot area waiver as outlined, that under Section 060-020, waiving the 43,560 square feet to allow a leased area no less than 5,625 square feet, based on testimony that was provided, and also based on the ownership of the property utilizing the area, continue agriculture use for the specific area around the tower.
And I forgot to mention...
And also the condition of approval, condition of approval associated with the minimum lot area, where the minimum lot area waiver shall only apply to the application considered at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Second the motion is presented. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, do we have an adequate motion?
We do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Well, just, so, because we've been kind of reversing, I want to reiterate. So, now there's a motion to approve. If you mo, if you agree with the motion to approve the minimum lot size, you're gonna vote yes. If you disagree with the minimum lot size waiver, you're gonna vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Questions, discussion? Mr. Hampton, good? Okay. Ms. Edgar, we'll move into a roll call vote.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And the motion to approve the waiver on the minimum lot area has passed on a vote of 10 to 1. One more, Mr. Urban?
So, this would be, again, as Mr. Baxter has explained to you, this is a little different animal than our normal, but this would be a motion to either approve or deny the telecommunication tower. On page five and six in your staff report, you have proposed, suggested motions, and you'll have to identify if you're inclined to approve this, that it is generally and complies with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Oldham County zoning ordinance. There's a potential binding element associated with this, and I'm gonna modify it just briefly. The binding element, as always, we say there shall be no changes to the Request to Telecommunication Plan and Application as presented at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, without review and approval of the, of the commission, with the exception of their lot size might change because the landscape waiver was denied, and their lot size may change. I don't think that needs to come back to the commission. That would be simply a submission to the staff. And the inclusion of the landscape plan. So, I think, I don't think either of those conditions have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, commissioners, everybody clear? Any questions, discussion? Floor is open. Mr. Douglas?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion then on, under PZ-23020, that we approve the telecommunication tower as presented in testimony, that the tower request, it complies with the Oldham County Comprehensive Plan, the telecommunication tower request complies with the requirements of the Oldham County zoning ordinance, based on the approval of the minimum lot area that was already approved by the commission. And also, that we, potential binding, or the binding elements associated with the telecommunication tower approval, which is one, there shall be no changes to the Request to Telecommunication Plan and Application as presented at the September 26, 2023 Oldham County Planning Commission Public Hearing, without review and approval of the commission, with the exception of the lot size change...
And landscaping.
And landscaping buffer. And two, the telecommunication tower shall comply with applicable, local, state, and federal regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Counsel?
Adequate motion, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Hampton, I have second. Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, we're gonna move into a roll call vote. Ms. Edgar?
Mr. Ender?
Yes.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Winters?
Yes.
Mr. Klingemfuss?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. And PZ-23020, approval of the telecommunications tower application has passed on a vote of 11 to 0. All right. Mr. Urban? Nothing on the horizon?
Oh, training.
Brian, Brian?
Other business on there.
Other business?
But, but I'm gonna be brief.
Okay.
I know it's late. You want me to go ahead and go?
No.
You ready?
Let's go ahead and burn through this.
Okay. So, just real quick, Ms. Davis attended some continuing education, a seven-hour National USPAP update course. I don't know what that stands for, but it sounds important. So, she is asking her colleagues to approve her seven hours of continuing education for her, her training that's required every two years.
All right. Motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve her credit hours.
Motion and a second for approval. Second? Mr. Hampton, thank you. We'll do this by voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right. Ms. Davis, you have your hours.
And then, if so inclined, Ms. Jones dropped off yesterday. I didn't put her name down on the agenda, but if you're so inclined to approve her continuing ed as well, I would gratefully appreciate it if you all want to. It is for six hours AIA, AICP credit hours for six exhilarating hour-long classes. So...
Subject matter was?
Was, let's see, Why Preserve: An Introduction to Historic Preservation, Community Outreach, Building Public Support, Standards and Guidelines for Design Review. If you want to elaborate, you can.
That covered it.
All right.
Send me on.
All right, we got a motion. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Ender. Once again, voice vote. All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Ms. Jones, you have your hours.
And then SRC Thursday for those members, 5:00. And then, our filing deadline has passed, so we do have stuff on the agenda for next month. I believe it's October 24th, I think? I believe it's October 24th, I think, is the Tuesday. So, see you then.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, everyone. Anyone got anything before we roll? All right, let's get a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Adjourn.